We have a great rodeo planned for you all this year. We actually have sold out all of our mutton busters, so that's always a highlight. And we have two great specialty acts, the Ekapah, or Apache spelled backward, trick riders, a drill team, and maneuver motorsports motorcycles. And we have, hopefully, to have a full field of candidates. But now I would like to introduce you to our 2015 royalty, invite them up. We have our queen, who is Chelsea Palmer, our first attendant, Rachel DeSpain, and our second attendant, Elena Hunter. Thank you. While you guys are headed back on the daisies, we want to recognize our Western Stampede Committee, the volunteers of the city with us this evening. We have Mark Wright, the past chair, and we have Marlene Conrad and Kat Whiting, who are our royalty co-chairs this year. And we thank, again, the City Council and the mayor for their support year after year. And we look forward to seeing you guys in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the time and effort you put into this, and congratulations to the royalty. Item 5A, communications. See you tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Mostly what I have tonight are items that Julie is preparing for, and a lot of this is with our Stampede Committee. And again, I want to express my appreciation to all of them that are participating. I don't know how many of you made it over to the library event this last Saturday. There's estimate of over 6,000 people attending. But Nate and other members of the committee, they have the royalty there, too. Great showing for the stampede. We appreciate that. I want to express my appreciation to all of our staff members that were there in the hot sun, helping out. Great demonstrations, a lot of equipment. It was fantastic day this last Saturday. Another item for your consideration, again, this is not for a vote or anything, but the Osmonds will be practicing in our old library where other theater arts, items were practiced. But in the very end, right before they're ready to perform, they need some, a larger area. We have an agreement with the Veridian for 10 free days of use at the facility. We've not used those 10 days at all this year. Julie would like to commit two of those 10 days to the Osmonds so that they can use that facility. It's a time when it's free and everything, so if there's no opposition, we'll authorize Julie to let the Osmonds use that.
Anyone opposed to that?
Do they need more than two?
That's all that they said they needed. So...
Could we say, would we say two, maybe more if they need it?
If you're not opposed, I'll let Julie know that if they need another day or two, you, I take it you're not opposed to that, especially where we've not used it? Very good. Thank you. I appreciate that support, and I'll make sure that the Osmonds know of your support there, too. This Sunday will be our last Mexican rodeo. If you recall, we have made a commitment not to accept any more applications, even though people have asked if they could. We'll be working with them to monitor and curtail the sound as much as possible. And Julie has asked that she be able to delay the changes to the facility use policy until after we get through all these big events that are coming up. So we talked about maybe one or two council meetings. If you can just be patient with us, we'll come back at the end of August. This one was already on the calendar. We won't add anymore. Also, with the stampede, Nate did a great job. Just remember to put on your calendars, the 2nd, 3rd, and 4th of July. For those who want to participate in the welcoming of the, all the people there, the contestants and everyone, meet at the skybox at 7:15. And that's where, sometime between 7:15 and 7:45, they'll do those announcements, and you can be there to welcome the group. We'll also have packets of information that'll be delivered to you with tickets and things like you've had every year, so we look forward to that. That's all that I have for upcoming events. And please look at your calendars on our website for other events that'll be going on throughout the city. Our staff puts a tremendous amount of effort into making sure that we have a lot of things to do during the summer, and you can have a good time. Thank you, council.
Darian?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
David O'Keefe?
No report tonight.
Wright?
Just real quick, I want to keep you guys updated. We did receive back the first round of proposals for the playground equipment that we're replacing with some of the bond money. We've got another proposal out for another round of playground equipment, and also pavilions that will be coming to council for approval in the near future. Thanks.
Thank you. Ryan?
Nothing tonight.
Justin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of updates on some public works projects. The 5600 West construction between 6200 South and 70 South is moving along. The goal is to have all of the construction work done on that project done before the 4th of July. On the 90th South reconstruction, that project is moving along quite quickly. They've already been done paving operations on that. They expect that to be done in the next few weeks. The 40th West Culvert is nearing completion. The 3300 West Storm Drain Line that runs through the neighborhood north of Constitution Park is on the consent agenda tonight for that contract to be awarded. The 70th South Storm Drain Line is at 30% design, and HA5 of paving has begun for the season. So we're staying busy.
Chief McRee?
Thank you, Mayor and council, and I just have two quick updates for you and also those in the audience tonight. You might have seen in the news this last week, the fire department, we did put out fireworks restrictions for Western City. Those restrictions are the same as what they were last year. It was in the newspapers, media, and other media outlets. It's also, the information is all posted on our website. And as the fireworks stands begin to open, we'll hit each one of them and put our restrictions there as well, so people that are purchasing fireworks will know if they're able to shoot those off in their neighborhood. Secondly, in conjunction with that press release that we done, I just want to give credit to Clint Hutchings and our GIS group. They've done a great job with assisting with maps. In fact, one of the media outlets used all of their maps throughout their whole story as to show those. So appreciate Clint and his group for the work they've done on those maps. Thank you.
Thanks. Chief Diamond?
Yes, Mayor and council, thank you. Just to let you know, we have an academy graduation tomorrow. Justin Stapley, our newest officer, will be graduating from the academy tomorrow at 11 o'clock at post, if any of you are interested in going to that. You're welcome to be there. We also had a, what we call a VTOC, Basic Tactical Operators Course graduation last week. We had two members of our department graduate from that course. That qualifies them to be on the SWAT team, and they're on the SWAT team as well. You may have heard the Attorney General, Sean Reyes, talking about the operations that they've done in human trafficking recently, some of the things that they did. Just so that you're aware, there was one massage parlor in West Jordan that we forwarded to them that they, that we did a search warrant on as well. So we're trying to curtail that. And then finally, thank you for all your support and everything that we've done with the Child Abuse Awareness Field, and just to make the public aware of that, we had this last weekend, Child Abuse Awareness Field, over 1,000 flags that we put up in Memorial Park to try and bring attention to child abuse awareness. Those flags will stay up through Sunday, which is Flag Day, so it's appropriate that we still keep those up through there. So thanks for all the support that's been there. The mayor was there Saturday mornings. We appreciate him being there. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shopworth?
I'm not here this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, just a reminder to the public, for those who don't know, I get to participate as a board member in the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District. And as such, I just wanted to take a moment and encourage everyone in the public to visit Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District's website. It's pretty simple to find. It's JVWCD.org. That stands for Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District.org. On the website, they have a banner that talks about water use advisory and the importance of water conservation. Specifically, they have a banner right now that says, "Right now, they recommend a maximum of watering two days this week." Some people, I've been lucky enough this year somehow, I haven't had the water yet. I've just, it's just been dry, or the water pipes have been dry since work, so... But the maximum is two right now. That's the current recommendation, if you do feel like you need to water and your lawn is drying up. Anyway, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Councilmember Hager?
Yeah, I just want to recognize in our audience, our youth theater folks here, and just for the council reference, we're here just to talk about some of the successes that they've had and how, and requests that the council on the budget. So they'll be coming up with some comments, but I appreciate them being here. Thank you.
Councilmember Hazen?
Nothing tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick, this last week, I had the opportunity to visit one of the water tanks under construction over on 40th South, 70, or excuse me, 70th and or South, 40th West. And want to say thank you very much to them for their time and willingness to educate me a little bit on that portion of our water system and see where quite a bit of our city funding has gone. It's very educational, helpful. And again, thank you to staff for the hard work and effort that they've put into, especially things like that that you don't often think, if you turn the tap, water shows up. And it's nice to see a little bit more of all the work that it takes to get there, so thank you.
Okay, first, I'd like to thank all the residents that had to wait and exhort them in the amount of time while we were in closed session. We have a lot of issues right now at the city level, and we were trying to get through them efficiently and rapidly at the same time, and we apologize for that. Second, I have two things I need to cover tonight. One, I met with a man that represents, his name is Seon Flautabaye, of the Polynesian Community Service Organization. He's trying to get a Polynesian community center built on 12 acres located in Salt Lake City at California Avenue and 5600 West. The center will offer a safe location for students and senior citizens in the Polynesian community. And he just wanted a letter of support from West Jordan. There is a segment of our population that would be using this, and I just wanted to make sure that was, as always, the council's okay, got that letter. He's got a letter from Senator Hatch and many of the other, so I don't have any quote uncomposition to that. Then the other thing, Julie asked me if I could get an indication for the 4th of July parade. It is a election year, and she needs to know how many would like to be in the group and walk with the group, how many would like to do it on their own, do we need golf carts and how many? And basically, that's the answers.
I'll be within group and I'll walk.
I will as well. Team?
Okay.
I'll walk.
I hope to walk, but I'll have to be noncommittal. That'll be within two weeks of my wife's due date, so...
So you may or may not be...
Yeah. Maybe. We'll see. I'm hoping.
Okay, so, yes?
Will the parade be on the 4th itself on Saturday?
On Saturday, the 4th, yes. At 10:30 in the morning. Starts at City Hall and goes to 70th South, like last year. Okay, I'll report that. With that, we will now move to citizens' comments. I have quite a number signed up. We do have public hearings this evening. If you're here to speak on a public hearing item now, probably wouldn't be your time to speak unless you chose to. But if you're here for any other item, now would be the time. You have three minutes to address the council. Alexandra Efrain?
Mayor and council, I'd like to please stop a minute and let's pause. Ladies and gentlemen, may we pause for a moment to reflect upon our common goals before we begin the business of this meeting. We are privileged to gather here together in a system that gives us freedom to participate in our own governance, whether from within or through the strength provided by our personal faiths. We seek wisdom, understanding, fairness, and resolve in the fulfillment of our duties and in the pursuance of our goals. May our differences be respected, and our common aspiration of promoting the public good be our guide in carrying out the tasks we are about to undertake. Thank you. You know, I'm shaking. I'm asking for truth. Tonight, I talked to a member of Public Service. I asked that person if he ever talked to the head of Public Works, and he said no. Then I found out that he lied to me. I'm sorry, folks. I, I'm supposed to remain calm, Barchie. I cannot stand liars. Politics is politics, folks. But then I find out that this individual, he did have a talk with the head of Public Works. In fact, the head of Public Works hired him. I asked him if he'd take a lie detector test, and that individual said no. I also want to say once again, I'm asking the council to please remove our West Jordan Police Chief. He told me that Michael Brown, the unmanned black man from Missouri, deserved to be shot. And I don't...
We have, just a point of order. We don't make personal attacks in this room. I would ask our, the person speaking to please not attention, or direct any remarks to the individual.
I'm sorry, the truth is the truth.
This is not the forum for that kind of being made.
Excuse me, Mayor, did you not say that we can talk about anything?
You can address the council on any subject, but under the council rules, you cannot attack any person or...
I'm not attacking the fire chief. I'm just saying, he told me that the black unarmed officer...
Mayor, if I could just clarify that, it clearly states here that we not engage in verbal attacks against others or being disrespectful during the proceedings of the meeting. I, I think we could do that. You get your point across. We can all communicate with each other without, without doing that. And if we can, we have a much more productive meeting, and our city runs so much better. So please, thank you.
Excuse me, I'm not being disrespectful of our police chief.
Point of order, Mayor. I think we need to move on.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
John O'Leary?
Thank you, Mayor, council members, for giving me this opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm chairman of the Huntington Estates Water Company, which is an irrigation company. We have irrigation rights in Huntington Estates. I'm here with Robert Munson, who's a director, and we represent 48 water users in our subdivision. We have a problem with the irrigation pipeline on 40th West. And for 40 years, we never had a problem with that until the construction on 40th West. In the last couple of years, we've had water bubbling up out of the cleanouts down along 40th West in front of Country Squire on account of the pipe is not carrying the flow of water. We're allotted so much water out of the canal, we set our head gate to that. And in 2013, it started bubbling up out of that head, out of that manhole. So we cut our water down by one-fourth to keep it from doing that. That worked pretty good through 13 and 14. The first two times we used it in May, the water worked fine. By the 29th of May, when we set it, the water really bubbled up out of that catch basin, or not catch basin, the manhole. And we got a call from somebody in Country Squire that water was running down into Country Squire. So we sandbagged it there at the gutter to keep the water going back to the north into a catch basin. Took care of it, nobody got flooded. I met with Jared Monday. He tried to jet it, couldn't jet it because he had an obstruction in the pipe. So we put a camera down it, couldn't get a camera all the way because of gravel and rock in the bottom. Eventually did get a camera, threw it on Tuesday, the following Tuesday. And he says, yes, there's an obstruction, the pipe is crushed about 40, about 100 feet in from that manhole. And I've got some pictures here, Mr. Munson will pass out if you want to look at them. You can see the problem we're having now. You can see how this pipe has been compromised from the beginning. They looped around three catch basins plus two siphons under it, and that all restricts the flow of that pipe, and it's causing the problem we're having. So thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity of speaking with you, and I'd like to know who and when we can get it fixed. Thank you.
Sure, could you come up? Councilmember Hager, I'd like to know the exact location of that.
It's 40th West and... The location of what? That manhole? Okay, the, the, the pipe from the irrigation canal crosses 40th West at 8587 South. Where this manhole is coming up, the water's coming out of it, that's at about 100, about 50 feet north of that. And you can see Jared Mark on the road with green paint where the pipe was crushed. So you look at these pictures, you can see, some of the pictures I took got an address off of a mailbox in reference to the box. Thank you.
Okay, Justin, since I have intimate knowledge about this antiquated pipe that was going to be replaced three years ago, would you have someone take a look at that tomorrow and where it's crushed?
Yes, Mayor. We, we helped out this gentleman when he reported it to us. Jared, who he was referring to as Jared Milgate and our stormwater crew. And we, Jared Milgate ran the stormwater TV truck to verify the condition of the pipe. We have a video of that storm drain. So we can work with the mayor and council on what kind of direction we want to take with it.
Okay, thank you. Brenda Thomas?
Counsel, my name is Brenda Thomas. My husband and I bought a home on 6876 South, 3235 West when we first got married. It's a home that we've worked hard and paid off. Being very naive young people, we looked at the house, I thought it was cute because it had big windows, it was open, had a downgraded garage that went under the house. That wasn't a problem to me. Looked cute. Well, as we find, it is a problem. It takes on water, as you know. And we found out through this that the reason it's the only house that has a downward driveway is because the builders dug too far, too deep. And so the city, I don't know why, let it go. It's the only house that way. So I am here to say, I am for the grant to be able to fix this downward driveway and to be able to fill in my garage wall and get rid of the garage. I already have an existing garage on the side, so I made code for those kind of things. So I'm just here today to encourage you to pass on the grant so that I can take care of this problem that probably should have never happened in the first place. And that way, we can just fix a problem that it doesn't keep happening again. It'll just be done. And with the other efforts, which I am grateful for, in our storm drain that have gone forth, I think with all of that, life might get better later. I do have one request that I'm struggling with, and maybe Justin can help me with this. I am one that, this has been frustrating, but I have seen good things happen in, in solving problems. My only thing for my own personality, in my head, I really thought, okay, I come today, I'll apply tomorrow, I will start next week, I will be done before the summer's up. Well, I'm learning that even though people might think this is moving fast, it's not moving fast for an individual, for a resident. So Justin, this is what I'm wondering, maybe you can help me with. I know the 24, Justin told me there would be another thing because we've got to make, change codes to make things legal in the grant and all that. If someone could just write me down, we've got to do this and this and this, and this is the date. This is the date I can start things and I can say I'm done, then I will be okay. I can continue to work and I can continue to hope, but each week I come and I'm told there's more red tape, I struggle. So maybe if we can have an agenda for me, these are the dates, then I can do that. I want you to know I'm grateful for how things are moving and all the things that are accomplishing. I'm grateful for you that individuals will take the time to speak with me and tell me what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Jones?
Mayor, council, I'm Steve Jones. I live at 3234 West, 6920 South. I'm just here to remind you about this issue of the storm drain. I, too, am grateful that I've had some very good experiences with our West Jordan employees and, you know, for the most part, I, I don't have any complaints about that. I think they have some good plans in place that are, the wheels of government don't necessarily move fast, but at least they're moving forward. And I'm grateful for the mayor for taking the time to originally talk to us. One thing I do want to remind council is that we, part of these problems that developed was because of, and I, I hate to pick on developers, but we're, we're not allowing sufficient funds in their packages to pay for some of these changes. And what I've learned over the umpteen months is I directly attribute part of the problem that we're having right now, based on what's happened west of our Bangor Highway, basically. When those developments and stuff were put in, that pipe at 70th South should have been increased in size. That should have been part of the impact fees and stuff that are associated with it. Right now, I mean, I'm, I'm all for all business, but I, I really have kind of a sore spot because in, in watching what has happened with, with all these high-density developments and stuff going in, I really don't think our infrastructure is being addressed very well in regards to the size and numbers of communities that are being put in. And, and I think this is going to continue to be an ongoing problem if we don't start following, the last council meeting I came to, there was a whole set of rules set up there. I think it was item E or an F in the planning commissioners that talked about how these, how these developments are going to affect our community, the infrastructure. I don't think that's being done very well personally. We, we, I look at Gardner Village, and they're putting in a whole bunch of places there, but we're doing nothing with the roads that support it. And, and to me, that just is, that's just narrow-mindedness. So I would hope that as we go through and approve some of these changes, which change is going to happen, that we really look at the infrastructure that are supporting the, as the water people like to say, the downstream users. You know, how are we affecting them? I do appreciate the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mandy Bastin? Mandy Bastian?
Hi, I'm Mandy Bastian, I live at eighty-three oh eight South, sixty-four thirty West. I'm here representing, uh, our youth theater program. We are trying to grow our program and are aware that in previous years, we have lost a lot of participation. A large reason is, we could not provide quality shows for the youth to participate in due to a lack of funding. We had obscure scripts that children were not acquainted with and that were poorly written. We watched our numbers dwindle as kids went to other cities' programs because they were doing Disney shows and mainstream shows. This year, however, by putting more money into our shows, our program is picking up. There is a buzz about us. We're excited, and we have exceeded our estimated revenues by two thousand five hundred dollars. In order to do these shows, the ones that attract our community, there is a fee of two thousand three hundred to four thousand dollars for scripts alone. We are also looking at revenue rental costs of four thousand five hundred for minimal rehearsal days, tech week, and performances. To do two shows a year, the cost would be sixteen thousand five hundred. That doesn't include the cost of costuming, set, equipment, posters, flyers, makeup, concessions, summer workshop, and our West Jordan Parade. We love doing this for our community and take pride in the work we do. We do not want a second-rate youth theater. The kids that use our program love the arts, make lifelong friends, gain confidence and public speaking skills. Our program helps keep kids out of trouble, just like our sports do. These children deserve a quality program, like others deserve sports. We are not asking to exceed other cities' programs, we just need and are asking to be equal. Please take pride in all of our city's youth. This fall, we are doing Beauty and the Beast, and next spring, Into the Woods. We are already receiving emails, texts, and phone calls with people excited to participate. We know we can be profitable, we just need the funding to do it. We need to give our community a youth theater to be proud of. In twenty-twelve, our revenues were over ten thousand dollars. In twenty-thirteen, they were over twelve thousand, and in fourteen-eleven, and look at this year, look at twenty-fifteen, wow, we are so excited, our total revenues were over seventeen thousand. We are so excited and hope you are too. The greatest wealth of this nation is not only the mergers of giant corporations or the possibility of further globalization of the infrastructure of the world. In the United States, our greatest single source of wealth is the mind and talent of our young people. To not use it is stupid, to waste it is a crime. That's Isaac Stern, he's a renowned musician. Please be ever mindful about our youth tonight in making your decisions. Your youth theater needs more funding, and it definitely needs your support. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. June, did you want to speak now or at the public hearing? Jay? Okay. We'll move now to, oh, excuse me, anyone else from the public wishing to speak, please come forward, please state your name and address.
Sorry, I didn't get here in time, but turn in a sheet. My name is Bart Barker, I live at twenty-three, twenty-four Henry Alice Court, and, uh, I want to commend the council for the service you put in, the time you spent. I know how hard it is. I'm here speaking on item nine C under business items, to endorse and encourage the approval by the council of the CenturyLink franchise agreement. At the county, we approved that for the unincorporated area a few months, a couple of months ago. Um, I spend a lot of time studying this and going through it, looking at the FCC rulings. This is an excellent opportunity for West Jordan City, for our neighborhoods, to get gigabit, which is a thousand megabits per second internet speed, along with, uh, another option for TV beyond cable or satellite, without any exclusivity of keeping other future, uh, providers out of the city, because this is a non-exclusive agreement that's being proposed. This simply opens the door for competition in a very, very positive way, and I believe economic development. As these fiber services become available in business areas and businesses that are considering locating here gain access to that gigabit speed, as well as the other services that are attended with it. I congratulate the city staff, the attorney's office, the city manager, and the council members who have been involved in this, uh, for the foresight and, and inviting and allowing CenturyLink in here. We hear a lot about, um, Google Fiber in Salt Lake City. CenturyLink has already invested enormous amounts of money in Salt Lake City to provide exactly the same fiber service. We get it here without waiting, although the neighborhoods will have to be built out one at a time, so there will be a rollout period, but, but I'm excited about it as a, as a resident, and I endorse it as a fellow public servant. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I do have, I have one question probably for our public works, in regard to the flooding issues. I've noticed up on, uh, the big retention area, Cougar Rain, the Cougar Detention, are we holding that water? Appears we're holding that for a few days after a storm, is that the case?
Uh, yes, that's correct. We're holding that water in the Cougar Detention Basin to allow the water that's in Constitution to be able to drain.
Okay.
Um, we like to drain the, the detention basins that are further downstream, let them drain before we pass the water down, their direction.
Okay, thank you, excellent. That's my thought, thank you.
Councilmember Hager?
Uh, concerning the sound, Mayor, I'd like to pull E, F, and I. Oh, I'm on the, uh, Levi, sorry. E, E and F.
Mayor?
Councilmember Southwood?
A question of, uh, clarification, I don't know if I need to pull D or not. It was mentioned early by Bryce Hatterley that there will not be any more Sunday events, but here's a, uh, asking for a beer license on August ninth, which is, is that an incorrect date?
So, okay, we already approved the August ninth one. Uh, yeah, I was texting Julie to confirm, she said that there's not an event on the ninth. Yes, and it appears because they didn't get their paperwork in time to get the council approval, that they have canceled those events, except for this Sunday, and they will not be having a beer license. Julie confirmed that for me. However, what I did ask for is because of the potential conflict that they have, feeling the city may not have done our part in time, I asked for this to be on the agenda, and I would recommend approval so that they can't argue that we did not follow our, uh, steps required for them to move forward.
So, you can answer?
So, I would prefer that the council follow through with that, even though they've decided to cancel the event, that way they can't claim that we didn't follow our steps of approval.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nichols?
Uh, Mayor, I move that we approve the consent calendar less E and F.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Councilmember McConaughey. Discussion of the motion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Southwood?
Aye.
Mayor Raw?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hager?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Hope passes six in favor.
Okay, item eight A, public hearing item, receive public input and consider for approval, resolution fifteen dash one-one-two approving the final budgets for the City of West Jordan General Fund, the Special Revenue Funds, the Capital Project Funds, the Water Fund, the Sewer Fund, the Solid Waste Fund, the Storm Drain Fund, and the Internal Service Funds for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. David? Oh, excuse me, Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm going to defer this to Ryan if the council has any questions at this point in time before we open the public hearing. Are there any?
Councilmember Hager?
Thanks, Mayor, yeah, I just wanted to, because I put this in writing to the city manager and to the, um, our finance director, and it was concerning our residents that run the, uh, youth theater, and, um, it was proposed, and I mentioned to the council that, uh, we increase their budget before we start reviewing this by five thousand dollars. Last year's budget, which we're still operating on, uh, we amended the budget to what we want to keep it at this year. So, um, for some reason, it, it went back down from twenty-five to twenty thousand. And so, um, just a consideration from the council, if you would, uh, honor our children and increase that budget by five thousand. Thank you.
Um, John Gardner asks that, um, we consider, uh, those employees that didn't fit, we've talked about this before, that didn't fit into the career ladder, uh, in order to have competitive wages within those that don't fit that, uh, criteria, that they would be able to have competitive wage rates so that they can get, uh, applicants to those jobs.
So, Mayor?
Yes.
Would, would that include, are you including the, um, issues that we've identified with the Parks Department? Is, is that included with what you just mentioned?
That's a question for Ryan.
Mayor?
Yes?
I, I think I can help on that one. John had sent an email to you as councilmembers on the fifth of June outlining, uh, several items that were identified along with the career ladders. Um, it's my understanding that that did not include adding additional staff to the Parks Department, but there were some adjustments in wages that I think affected, and that would be referred to as, uh, Competitive Plus Advantage Compensation Program. And there was a table that showed the, uh, one-fifth of the positions that were reviewed this last year, and yes, there were several Parks Department employees', uh, positions that we found that we were paying below market. Uh, I think there was what, like thirteen positions that were being proposed, and that would have been a dollar amount of about twenty-four thousand dollars to correct all of those positions. Some of those were parks.
And I guess I could, to our Parks Director, recently we heard from him in, um, talking about this, is that, does that all, would that address your needs?
That'll, that'll bring us up to market right now, where we're, where we're, we need to be. Um, in the previous email, I said, right now, we're losing one employee every two months, just going to different departments within the city. Um, and there's been a few that left the city too, so.
And I only bring it up, not that it's any important, more important than anything else in the city, but as soon as we start losing our Parks guys, and, and, and then our parks end up going three, four weeks without being cut, that's when people start to notice. They notice a lot sooner than maybe we haven't filled in accounting position or, you know, what have you. They start to notice when the city starts to look a little shoddy in that regard, so I think that's important, let me address, address that, thank you. Uh, not to pick on accountants, I'm sorry.
Other comments, questions? The motion would be in order? Oh, yeah, I guess we better open the public hearing. Councilmember Southwood, do you want to wait till I say the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, okay, hi, Mr. We'll now open the public hearing for eight A. Anyone from the public wishing to speak now would be the time on this issue. Please come forward.
Okay, just for the record, I said this before, I am opposed for the budget to have the individual council people, they were making eight hundred a month, and it was increased to fifteen hundred a month, so we're trying to save our money, and I know the budget we're, and I'm against that item for the increase of the council people. I said it before, I don't, we have to watch our pennies. I know the vote was five to two about increasing that amount of money. We're a smaller city than West Valley, and I think that it's a privilege to serve the city. And I know all of you have spent a lot of money out of your own pockets, but that's the system. So, I'm against that budget item to be approved, I said it before, and that item, I think, should still go, should be decreased. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to address this public hearing item? I will close the public hearing on item eight A. Councilmember Southwood?
Thank you, Mayor, I move to be approved resolution one-five dash one-one-two adopting the fiscal year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen final budgets for the specified funds, uh, as presented in our packets.
Mayor, do we not have a presentation?
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Southwood and a second by Councilmember Nichols. Councilmember Hager?
Well, I, you know, this is a hundred and twenty million dollar budget, and I, I'm looking at a, a PowerPoint, are we not going to go through that PowerPoint for our residents?
We can certainly turn the time over to Ryan if that's what you would like, his information on that. Uh, if it's okay, I would also like to reiterate what the mayor asked, or stated earlier, that our finance, not our finance, our HR department has, uh, put together this information earlier on these different, uh, wage issues that are still unaddressed, and, and if the council would be willing to identify those. We also had the judge's salary that we've budgeted for the amount that the state has recommended, but we need also confirm. So, there's a few things that we will need to do before a vote takes place, if you would kindly allow us to walk through those. Counsel, would you like Ryan to give you this presentation?
Yeah, Mayor, can I make a substitute motion? I move that we allow staff to, uh, present their presentation before this motion.
That would be a substitute motion? Thanks for a lack of second. Councilmember Southwood?
Uh, I was just going to suggest, if it's acceptable, we have a lot of business that, we, we have looked over this budget quite a few times, um, unless there's something necessary to do before we pass it, then we just put this at the end of our meeting, get through the rest of our meeting first. If we have time, I, I don't know, I don't necessarily think we need to go through again, we've passed it out quite a few times in previous meetings, and we've had opportunity to look over it for months.
We're here to serve you, and whatever you would direct us to do, we'll be glad to do.
But I'm easy either way, whatever you want.
Anybody have opposition to moving this item to the last of the meeting?
Either last meeting or not, do the, we don't need the, the presentation, I think we're quite aware of the budget, but if we need the presentation, let's go through it.
Anyone need more presentation on the budget?
I do.
Paul?
I'd like to see what staff has put together, um, and see what the difference may have been from the last time we spoke. And the last, uh, council meeting, there were conversations about potentially having additional headcount, and I also wanted to see how this would play with the request on HR, so I, I'd like to see what's put together before voting.
Councilmember Hager?
Yeah, I, yeah, I want to sound off, this is one of our most important fiduciary responsibilities, and so if we need more time after the meeting, so we can bring other business forward on, I, uh, for that, but let's not, um, reduce our responsibility, this is a hundred and twenty million dollars of taxpayers' money, let's talk about it, let's hear what our staff has to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Southwood?
I, I defer to you, if you want, as part of discussion through the motion, or if you prefer that I withdraw until after, I'll, I'll do whichever you prefer.
Do you mind withdrawing the motion?
I will, I will draw the motion.
We will move to public hearing item eight B. Receive public input and consider for approval. Receive public input and consider for approval ordinance fifteen dash one-two, amending the two thousand nine West Jordan Municipal Code Title Thirteen, Section Fifty-One, amending the West Side Planning Area Boundary, Peterson Development, applicant, Barrett Peterson. David?
Yes, Larry Gardner will be making his short presentation.
Um, here in council, thank you. This, uh, is an ordinance before you, it's a request from Peterson Development to amend the West Side Planning Area. Uh, this is the, the current boundaries of the, uh, West Side Planning Area, as you recall, earlier in the year, uh, this forty acre piece titled Orchard Heights was, uh, put into the, the WSPA, and now, uh, they would like, excuse me, to add this liver eight acre piece of property adjacent to Mountain View Corridor, uh, just on the east side of Clay Hollow Wash, so it's between Clay Hollow Wash and, uh, the Mountain View Corridor. Uh, this would amend the WSPA, uh, area, total area from four hundred and ten acres to four hundred and eighteen acres, and that is really the, the crux of the, of the request at this time. If you have any questions for me, I'll, we have it answered.
Questions from council? Thank you, okay. We'll now open the public hearing of item eight B, and first to speak will be June Christian.
I'm June Chris Yanson, represent myself and Lynn Rasband, and in general, we want to speak against the designation of very high density. This area out here to the west, uh, all the way from Bangeter Clear to U-111 has been whittled away at with zoning changes until there's so much stuck into it that are, we are definitely in jeopardy of having our, uh, quality of life diminished by far. Specifically, I'd like to address a paragraph of this proposal, it's on page twenty of this, uh, uh, text, the text amendment, uh, let's see, it's a text amendment proposal presented by Peterson Development, it's a statement by Barrett Peterson. I'm going to page twenty, and in this, uh, paragraph, it starts with Barrett Peterson said Orchard Heights and so forth. In the middle, there's a clause that says there is one five acre piece that will possibly be within the boundary, but it could be developed on our own. My first question is, is it our five acres there that is being referred to in this paragraph? Can somebody tell me if that is the case before I go on? It isn't? Okay. I had to make that clear for sure, because I would not want the rest of this being used as to qualify open space to be addressed to us, and so I'll just stick with that general statement that, uh, please, uh, we already have high density there. I know that it's not the most desirable place to live along the side of the corridor, but high density, give us a break. Let's keep it without whittling away and putting more and more and more into this area. We who live out here would appreciate that, and I'm sure from the sounds of the comments that the people on the other side of the Bangeter and down Wood Two, and consider the water, the traffic, and so forth. And so we would just request, leave it as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address this public hearing item? Please come forward. Please state your name and address.
I'm Caitlin Nichols, um, represent Peterson Development, uh, two-twenty-five South, two-hundred East Salt Lake City. This amendment that we're asking for is just one of a series that we're looking for. Um, this parcel has come before you in a rezone, which was approved in September to be HFR. The reason for that rezone was to mitigate the, the deep, um, hazard of Clay Hollow Wash, and to make a good use of this parcel that's kind of a remit, and, um, the council agreed then and approved then. So this is not for a rezone, but it's just to amend the boundary. We're just following a series of steps of amending, um, the master plan will come next, but the WSPA, this is more like a rezone of the map, um, amending the map itself. And then the next that will come before you is amending the Highlands' master plan to include this property, and then the SAA will be amended as well. And then you will see the development plans, the sub-area plans for this, so you'll, you'll see this many times over and have a chance to make comment on amenities and densities at that point. But, um, just to, uh, address her, her concern, the five acres that might have been mentioned by Barrett, is the five acre piece lower below, um, south of that church? And that is not currently owned by Peterson, but they have looked at that and, and it would be a logical thing to incorporate into the Highlands', but it's not yet a part. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward.
Alexandra Efrano, thirty-seven, thirty-five, Judge Circle in West Jordan. I just want to remind the mayor and the council that a year and a half ago, we were stressing about refocusing and not having high density. Yet we find little things here, little things here, you open up a little page here, okay, we can do a little high density here, a little di, high density. But you're going back on what you did, uh, two years ago, when you, when you're, you did the strategic planning thing, and you said at that time, you all agreed at that time, that you weren't going to do high density. And I'm just going to reassess, just think about it. I mean, you, you're allowing the extreme high density because of property. You know, money really does talk, doesn't it? And that's why you're going back on your own, your own agreement. You said no high density. Now, I don't know, I don't know in detail about all of this, but I just, overall of West Jordan, anytime we have more property, let's remember, we, we all agreed we were not going to do high density. The real estate people are pushing you, pushing you, money, money. I hope and pray the truth comes out, that you're not taking money under the table. The truth is, we don't want high density. Please refocus that. On any time the subject of, of, uh, land comes up, development comes up, please, please remember, a, a group of people in West Jordan really, really, really do not want high density. Thank you for keeping that in mind, what you said two years ago. Thank you.
Just to be clear, um, we're not talking about zoning this, this is already zoned, and in the last calendar year, for the first time ever, West Jordan put a cap and a grade system in place, and are mortifying for six months and four months on multifamily housing, um, so I think we've addressed that issue. This, this particular issue is just added to the West Side Plan, not, not rezone of the property, it's already zoned. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? I will close the public hearing of item eight B and return to council. Council member Southworth.
Thank you. For staff, I just have a question, by adding this eight acres and change, how does that affect the overall requirement for open space?
It would, of course, help, because it's a twenty percent requirement in the Highlands' master development plan, so when this is added, then that development that comes into this site in the future would be required to add, or would be required to have twenty percent open space on their development.
Because of the filling in of this wash, this one exceeds, in this eight acres, exceeds twenty percent, doesn't it?
Yeah.
It does. And so probably what that does is it removes the requirement for open space elsewhere within the Highlands', this one exceeds it, but, but minimal at best.
Minimal, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I just wanted to, to be clear that, okay, thank you.
Council member McConaughey.
Thank you, mayor. Number of questions on this one, rather just wanted to share a couple of things that were running through my mind. Um, in the past, when we've talked about making changes to the WSPA, I've been against that, thinking that, well, this is something that we've done away with, we've tried to move on, why would we try and change what's out there, what we're already trying to get away from? In this case, my thinking is a little bit different for a couple of reasons. Uh, number one, uh, this is a really, really odd parcel that was acquired from UDOT, it's got that large, um, I don't want to call it a canyon, but it's almost a canyon, uh, it's not really safe to climb up and down, it's a, oh, I forget what the word is, nuisance, um, oh, something.
Hazard.
It, it, it's a hazard, but it's something kids will see, and they, they like to go to and play in, and it's, it's, it's a safety concern. With what's been proposed to incorporate it into the WSPA, um, area, Peterson will be able to develop this out in a matter, in a manner consistent with everything else that's out there. If we were to deny that, this could be a really awkward island, uh, within the development, and it, I, I would worry what impact that might have on mitigating the safety concerns that are out there. The other thought that I had is, uh, going back to the first thing I mentioned, this was an odd parcel acquired from UDOT, um, that probably they should have divested themselves from a long time ago, and had it, uh, been done sooner, it would have been in there from the start. There's no way we would have said, yes, everything except this one little section. Uh, so in this one exception, when we're going back and looking at, granted it's new development, but it's almost infill in my mind, it seems appropriate to make an exception to incorporate this small sliver of property into that, uh, WSPA, so I would be speaking in favor of the proposal.
Council member Nichols.
Thank you, mayor. With the comment mentioned by, uh, council member McConaughey, I'm in complete agreement and move that we, uh, uh, move to adopt ordinance fifteen dash twelve.
Second. I have a motion by council member Nichols and a second by council member McConaughey, discussion of the motion. Council member Hagan.
No, I want, I want to make a comment and ask a question, but I'll make, uh, you know, we've already zoned this, and I, I wanted to make a comment before the motion came, but, you know, this high density area, um, actually has a trail that goes through it right now, that is, um, really something that people use quite a bit. And the developers, uh, we, we granted high density on this, I voted for it, uh, because it makes sense there. They're, they're going to lighten it up by increasing lighting on the trail. There's a lot of things that I think this developer particularly will bring in, because they've done it in other places. However, beyond this, what I perceive this as is another taxation approach to these folks that will be intending on buying east this property, um, which means the Highland Assessment Area, um, received money, uh, for maintenance of the area. And I, so I, again, not, I, I'm going to go opposed to this motion, just because assessment to me is just another tax, and, um, if whoever, whoever established the WSPA, which is the Western Side Planning Area, and decided that it, it was an assessment area, so be it, that this wasn't part of it, and so I'll, I'll, I'll vote against that. Thank you, mayor.
Council member Southworth.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to state that when this came up for the council, I was against the rezone, argued against it, I didn't think we needed any more density there, but I can see, uh, the benefits, the safety benefits, um, we have a healthy respect for property rights, and, and I don't know how reasonable it is to say that it will never be anything, uh, anything dense than maybe what I live anywhere. You know, that's just an unreasonable position, because there is a demand for that. If, if there wasn't, you know, I think it's ridiculous, we have apartments on the corner of U-111 and Seven Eight Hundred South, I don't know why, but there's a demand because they're full. But, but this is a location where you, you could say, okay, it makes sense, you're putting it on Seven Eight Hundred South, on, um, the Mountain View Corridor, and, and I guess what I want to say is although I was opposed to adding this in the first place, in hindsight, I can see some of those benefits, I'll be, um, supporting this motion only because the zoning's over, it's, it, you know, it doesn't make sense to, to continue to put my head in the sand, I guess, and then continue to fight it, but, but I'll be, I'll be supportive, thank you.
Let's vote.
Council member Hagan?
No.
Council member McConaughey?
Aye.
Council member Southworth?
Aye.
Council member Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Ral?
Yes.
Council member Hanson?
Yes.
Put passes five to one in paper.
Item eight C. Receive public input and consider approval of ordinance fifteen dash one-three ratifying the planning commission's approval of a preliminary development plan for the Gardner Station and establish a density of twenty-one point three-nine units per acre, location at twelve oh-six west, seven-eight hundred south. PCT SOD zone.
Mayor, council, Larry will be addressing the council on this issue.
Hold on a sec. Council member Hagan?
During, during your comments, you know, because this is a table item, as a public hearing, the last council meeting, and I know I, I, uh, we've been, you know, been in flux a little bit as far as, um, communication, um, can you verify that the residents attending this meeting have been notified of the public hearing to occur tonight?
Can I verify that? That's, uh, our recorder handles the notifications.
The only way they would be notified is because they were sent the first notice that dated, it marked May twenty-seventh, and then if they came to the meeting on May twenty-seventh, then we're here to hear the motion to continue it to tonight, and then also to see it on the agenda. We are not required by state law to re-note it or to re-mail notices to the residents.
So mayor and council, if it's, if it's all right with you, I'd like to turn some time over to Ray Woodchurch and Joe Colosimo to go through the presentation they've, uh, prepared, is that acceptable?
Please.
Good evening, council, uh, Joe Colosimo, one fifty-five West Malvern Avenue, Salt Lake City. I'm going to turn the time over to Ray to give his presentation.
So we're, we, we, uh, in our original proposal, let's see if I can, uh, we, we came through and we got approval for, uh, the TOD project that's located in the, at the address that was spoken of earlier, and the goals have pretty much remained the same on the project. But what we've done, um, through this, is we got into the project, we decided that, uh, it would be better to put elevators in the building, it would raise the quality of the buildings, uh, would allow us to, uh, do a little bit of a different configuration that was more transit oriented and more pedestrian friendly by adding those elevators. Um, and it also raised it from a B or a B-plus quality, uh, development to an A, A-quality development. So with that, the, the goals have all stayed the same, and we'll just go back through it and kind of remind you of where we were, this is the approved plan, and you can see on this, uh, that there's a, a little lightened area that we showed you before, and in our, our discussions with the city, we originally wanted to come in and bring this with the original approval, but because of the application that had taken place, we decided, um, to hold that off, and we'd come back and, and, uh, put that in a, in a future phase, so that we could complete this main street, this retail street that we wanted to put in place. And so that's why we're here today, as, uh, for this project. So we were approved, uh, by the city council, and, uh, then we went to the planning commission with the revised plan, uh, and that plan was approved unanimously, uh, seven-oh, and much of the controversy seemed to be come out of this project, because we've worked really hard with the community in order to raise the quality of the development and meet some of the concerns, or the concerns that they had about the development. Everything stays the same on the building heights that we had, uh, we, I talked about adding the elevators, we changed, uh, from a typical walk-up type B product that you see a lot of right now, and we, we've raised it to a, a new type of product that I think you're going to see in your city, and hopefully you'll see more, well, we'll see, any more of this may come in the future, but... But moved buildings 6 and 7 adjacent to the residential on 1300 West away from the residential area. And we thought that was a big positive step to start pulling these buildings right here back further and then providing driveway access into the parking lot. So this is the continuous street we have now that's flanked by the buildings, and we're talking about walk-ups, not walk-ups, but front doors to these, onto stoops that come out onto the streets. So it becomes a much more pedestrian-friendly development. We added rooftop decks up in the corner so we can get more eyes on the street and add an additional dimension. So we now have got a third layer that has a rooftop deck on it that the residents can use. And mixed-use building right here to complete the street. In reality, what this is, is we took this building and we flipped it over and put it right here on the other side of this main street. So now we've got additional retail use on that street. In the site plan, you can see in more detail here, we've, you can see how we've provided those additional driveway accesses off the sides, and then this is a continuous street right through here. Worked with the city through this process on meeting the conditions of the original proposal. So the advantages of this are, we removed vehicular access from Main Street, from the Main Street area. Finished out mixed-use street for the neighbors' request as we went through the original proposal. We strengthened the internal connections within the project, pedestrian-oriented, upgraded apartment types with elevators, new building type now, so there's more variety. You don't get like a single building type that's showing in the whole development, so you're gonna see a little more character in the development, and added the rooftop gardens in it. Density changes slightly from 19.3 to 21.4, but we still meet all of our open space requirements as part of this, and that's basically because to complete this street, we needed to do that. So you can see in our original view that we had this street shown as being completed when we went through it back in November, and this is fulfilling that vision for the project. The trail system, we've come through and looked at how the connections all work within the project and the pedestrians. We, there were some conditions that were placed on the approval, and we've come back and worked with the city on meeting those conditions that were in that approval. So the key statistics are, we've gone from, we have 224, we raised the density so that we can complete that street with a mixed-use unit and retail. And then we went from 9,000 square feet of flex retail to 30,000 square feet of flex retail, and that obviously has some implications on taxes and benefits to the city. Makes this front entryway a much more vibrant area, much more active. Gardner Station, we talked about the connection bridge, that's a complex thing that may come in the future. And then these are the elevations for the buildings that were adjusted. You can see that we've got a nice front door to them. And you can see in the key map over here where those buildings are located. And I'll just scroll through these so you can see what we're doing. So, overall, things changed because it raised the quality of the project. We had that opportunity. You know, I worked hard to see if we could improve things, and the Colosimos have been very cooperative in working with us. They've met with the neighbors, talked through some of these issues with them. And if you have questions, I'd like to answer them.
Questions of the applicant? Doesn't look good. Thank you. We'll now open the public hearing portion of item 8C. First to speak will be Jay Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor, council. My name is Jay Thomas, 1348 West Barton Hollow Drive. I'm opposed to this still. I wasn't in the first phase. The second phase is just adding some additional units. Some of the safety concerns still have not been addressed. Traffic is still horrible on 1300 West, it's horrible on 7800 South. And now we're just gonna add an additional, approximately about 100 cars. There's still gonna be some parking issues with bringing retail in. You're gonna have additional parking problems there, which will even limit maybe some of the access to emergency vehicles and stuff if they have an emergency situation there. So, I'm adamantly opposed to Phase 2. Obviously, Phase 1 has been approved, nothing I can do about that. But to add any more to this is a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward.
Alexandra Framo, 3735 Dunce Circle. I was opposed to this from Phase 1, and again, I am against it. We have to, here we go again, I know you all approved in the early part of this, the high-density. You blocked out a lot of homes' views of the mountains, and I'm against this. I agree with the gentleman that was right in front of me. I just, I think it's a disaster. 7800 is so heavily trafficked, and now we're gonna have more and more. And I know in the future, I would say the owner of Gardner Village is gonna be just having nightmares because what's gonna happen when they don't have the space to park their car, to go visit or retail, or there's just no place. So where are they gonna go? They're gonna go to the parking area of Gardner Village. And the owner there, I can foresee nightmares. We can't, we don't know for sure, but just, common sense tells you when you have 21 units per acre, there're gonna be people, 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 and where are they going to park? Anyway, thank you, Mayor and council. I'm opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in the public hearing portion? Please come forward. Please state your name and address.
Thank you, council. My name is Chad Lamb, 1434 West Highland Hollow Drive. Just to be in front of you, I'm not for or against the development. I do believe that people, you know, when they own land, they can develop where they can and when they want to. But at the same time, my biggest concern is 1300 West. I do drive on 1300 West every day, come down 78th. I know we can't stop traffic, but if this is something that's gonna be forward in adding 272 units, that's a minimum of 272 cars. I know the whole thought process is Trax is gonna bring in some of these people, but as I've seen over the years, even though Trax is there, I do not believe that people will stop driving their cars. They'll still be driving their cars. So, if this is gonna be forward, I just ask that the council and the city look at a way to fix 1300 West first because those people will be driving and exiting on 1300 the most rather than using the 7800 South, which is already busy. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will close the public hearing portion of 8C and return to the council. Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief question for staff. The traffic concern's always been, in my mind, the primary, I guess that's the primary concern at that. So, what I'd like to know, just, it could be even a reminder, because we've heard of a lot of these things, but the latest on our traffic studies and the future improvements of either 1300 West and/or 7800 South. What's on the horizon if staff could address that?
So first of all, the parking doesn't meet code. And it's the 1300 West, and maybe Justin Stoker can correct me on this, but I talked to Bill Baranowski, and he said that in the next year or two, there is, or at least it's being proposed, that this intersection be widened, adding right turn lanes. I don't know, Justin, you know, have you heard of that at this point?
Yeah, that's correct. 1300 West intersection's gonna be modified to include additional turn lanes and basically to configure better for better traffic flow. And then in the year 2020, we're gonna widen the whole street, 1300 West.
And so, you know, that is the first concern, is to keep the traffic flowing there because a lot of it backs up here because there's no way people can make a right-hand turn because it's on there at this point. Now, there will be a island at this location put in so people can turn, a left-hand turn island, and it will be widened into the project so that people can get out of the lane of travel to stop that. And then there's deceleration and acceleration lanes on 7800 South. So all of the concerns of the council from the last year have been addressed in this plan.
Then a follow-up would be, just related to 1300 West, isn't that part of the transportation plan, master transportation plan of the Wasatch Front Regional Council? Is that included in this?
That's correct, yeah. The 1300 West widening is a county-wide project. We were able to receive $6 million from the Wasatch Front Regional Council towards that project. But that 1300 West widening includes several different municipalities.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hagan.
Oh, Larry, we opened the questions again. So, Larry, this was passed back in November of 2014.
Yes.
You know, this high-development project on this property in November.
With the exception of building 2.
All right.
And it was a different configuration, that building at that time.
And just because I need to hear the number, what's the total number that they want to add to this development as far as units?
Forty-eight.
Yeah, forty-eight.
Forty-eight units, okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. If I recall, there were some changes to the rooftop heights between this one and the prior proposal. Can you?
It's what was approved before, so.
I thought in conversations with Charlie mentioned that the buildings were shifted further to the east, and consequently, they came down lower, so the effective roof height, as seen from 1300 West, was actually lower than it was in the original plan.
So from a, oh, sorry, so from a perspective standpoint, you're right. That's one of the benefits of the new plan because we pulled these back from the property line. So the buildings now are further away from those existing residential buildings, or some of those are just fields.
Thank you. Councilmember Southwood.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Let me add just a little bit of context to the comment about Wasatch Front Regional Council and what that means. That means that opens the door to federal and state funds for this project, which we will need. The city can still put in its money, but this is a big project and we need that support. And once you have that, then, you know, the ball starts to roll and it makes it a lot easier. That means the project's gonna get funded in a big way. So hats off to our city, our staff, the elected body, and everybody who's been involved with that. We had made that, understanding that this first part was approved, we made that a priority in our lobbying and our efforts with Wasatch Front and with the state to make sure that we get the funds to fix this problem because we recognize there is a traffic problem regardless of this project or not. This project goes in, this project does not, you have a traffic problem. So we do need to address that. So that's kind of some context of what that is. But I want to point out how, it's interesting with the item we just had with Peterson Development and this one here have this relationship, I can understand, and they're kind of intertwined. The last time when we approved this, they were on the same night. And here they are again, just happenstance, they happened to be here on the same night. And, anyway, I don't know, it's just an interesting happenstance. And I probably refer back to my comments before, I was against the other item previously, but it passed. And so I am supporting now, we'll move forward as is, and I hope that's the case here. Previously, when we set this up, we had residents that, we all know the history. This was a long, drawn-out issue, and there was a lot of heated debate that took place. And it was really a neat, neat experience. As I head on the twilight of my council experience, this is one of the few times where I've really seen earnestly a developer and a neighbor.
We're in order, Mayor.
Come together and talk about an issue and really come up some change. And I've been very impressed to see the concessions that were made on both sides come up with a great product and project. I'm excited that we're gonna have, we have the development agreement on the corner of this property to limit any future high-density development, that's important for this area. And that's dependent on this here as well. I'm glad to reduce the building heights so that we moved away from 1300 East, that we reduced the footprint of these buildings, we increased the retail space, which we desperately need. The pedestrian walkways were increased, we need that in this area. Walkability, we added turn lanes in and out of 1300 East. Excellent job. I'm, you know, I'm excited, just the process, how the people and everybody got involved and came up with this. It's a great plan, and my hat's off, and I'm, and my comments there, thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to Southwood for taking the time to answer questions. There's a couple of concerns I do have about this proposal. Number one, well, going back to Renalov to start with the rezon, I was in opposition to making that change in zones to make this PC in the first place. A number of concerns, and many of them are still there. With the current proposal, I have concerns with the traffic. Concerns with increasing the density that's already been approved from 19.28 to 21.4. Putting those additional units in there will continue to contribute. As Mr. Lamb mentioned, yeah, our timing, as frequently seems to be the case, is off in the order. Seems like with some of the projects, you need the rooftops and you can get the funding to finish the infrastructure. You can't always do the infrastructure first, so I think our timing's a little bit backwards. With the changes to this plan, I worry a little bit about the additional retail that's in there in that mixed-use, the building that's on the west side. Bringing in additional traffic and not really having a good flow for them to get in or out as you're looking at that corner parcel, that's gonna be difficult and constricting. That said, the original plan had already been approved, and if this is denied, they can still go with that original plan. And I have more concern with that first plan. There are benefits to this one where it's further away from the street, lower rooftops to impact the neighbors. Overall feel and flow of the development seems to be significantly improved, the trails, the walkability of the area in general. Though I'm still not a fan of the development, I think this is an improvement over what is already out there. And I think that we'd be doing a disservice to the community by denying the request. I think it makes sense and gives us the better of the two options to allow for this change. So I would be in favor, reluctantly in favor of the proposal.
Councilmember Southwood.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve ordinance 15-13.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Southwood and a second by Councilmember Hanson. Discussion of the motion. Councilmember Hagan.
So, this, excuse me, Mayor, if you give me some privilege here. You know, this has been an emotional issue for the residents for quite a while. And it's been my experience in the city government that when the residents are time and time and time again asked to come and speak up in behalf of their neighborhood, we wear them out. And this is just another example of, in my opinion, from a public hearing that we had last council meeting with no material, with no backing as far as documents, and asking residents to come and speak, and nobody did. And, you know, and the reason they didn't is because the developers have worn them down. And, you know, this passed once before. Why we're giving these developers another 48 units is beyond me other than they can do it and they have the votes, I guess, up here. I'm gonna speak against the motion, mainly because. Um, I'm going to speak against the motion mainly because it had already, it's already been through and, um, that's enough. If you could do it back then, why can't you do it now? And, and the design hasn't changed. You know, you're, it was promised a big, a bridge, you know, that there'd be an EDA. And I, I don't see those things happening. The road, now, we do know the road will happen, it'll probably be after we're all gone here on the dais. But, you know, um, I think asking this council and our residents for forty-eight more units, when you already got two hundred and twenty-six, twenty-something units, is taking it too far. So I'm opposed to this motion and thank you, Mayor.
I'm going to speak against the motion as well. Um, our residents have been screaming, um, no more high-density and to add forty-eight units would not be appropriate, in my opinion, at this location on an approved prior project. Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor, just briefly, um, I, I have concerns that have been mentioned here. I, I agree with the concerns that Councilmember McConaughey stressed and also that Councilmember Hega stressed, uh, in particular, forty-eight units. But I also do remember in our first conversations, an important piece, at least from my viewpoint, and I can only speak for me in that decision, in that I didn't like the uniformity of that entrance on seventy south of just having one building without a second. It made much more sense with a second building. And I do believe that this product and, and with what Councilmember McConaughey said, I think he said it very nicely, in that without approving this, we go back to the first one, I prefer this one much more than I do the first one. And with that being said, I support the motion, let's leave it at that. I had more to say, save the time, keep it brief.
Let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hega.
No.
Mayor Raul.
No.
Councilmember Southworth.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Vote passes four to two in favor.
Business item nine A, discussion and possible action regarding resolution fifteen dash one-one-three, setting the two thousand fifteen property tax rate for the city of West Jordan. Rise.
Mayor, I guess the question is, on the two items that were pulled from the consent agenda, do you want to handle those at the beginning of the business or at the end?
I was going to move them to the end.
Okay.
We have people waiting in the audience for a couple of their business items.
Okay. Uh, Mayor, I'm going to defer this, uh, to Ryan, uh, on this item. Are there, and just ask, are there any questions on this resolution?
Any questions on this?
Or we can have a presentation, I'm sorry.
Not on this. Not, not on this business item, we won't have one. This, this is basically just setting the, the property tax rate that the county tells us that it is and we just pass it through the resolution.
And just to clarify, there is no tax increase, it's, Ryan said, set by the county.
Yeah.
Thank you for making that clear.
Councilmember Nichols.
Mayor, I move that we, oops, sorry, I move that we adopt resolution fifteen dash one thirteen. Sorry.
I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Councilmember Southworth. Discussion?
Aye.
Let's vote.
Mayor Raul.
Yes.
Councilmember Hega.
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth.
Aye.
Vote passes six in favor.
Item nine B, discussion and possible action regarding ratification of resolution fifteen dash ninety-three, confirming the interim city manager's ability to appoint an acting city manager in his absence or temporary incap- incapacitation. Rise. Councilmember Hega.
In order to, to vote on this, we have to have a, a full council present. And I would, I won't move to table this till the next, uh, council meeting.
You took the words right out of my mouth.
Okay. But I, did I hear the words, I moved, I just wanted to make sure, did you make that motion?
I made a motion.
Second.
Here I have a motion from Councilmember Hega and a second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Southworth.
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hega.
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Mayor Raul.
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
Business item nine C, discussion and possible action regarding resolution fifteen dash one-one-four, authorizing the mayor to execute a franchise agreement with CenturyLink. Data okay.
Yes, Mayor and Council, um, this franchise agreement will allow CenturyLink to offer additional services to the residents of, um, West Jordan, specifically in the cable, uh, TV, um, arena. Staff has reviewed this and found this to be in order. For any technical questions, I would refer those to, uh, Darian. Thank you.
Councilmember Southworth.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve as presented.
Second. Give it to Chris.
I have a motion by Councilmember Southworth and a second by Councilmember McConaughey. Discussion to the motion. See you in a minute, let's vote.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Mayor Raul.
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth.
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Hega.
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
Thank you. I am proud to say that we're a one-gig city. Item nine D, discussion and possible action regarding resolution fifteen dash one-one-five, the city of West Jordan's support for Salt Lake County to place a local option sales tax on the ballot in November two thousand fifteen. Rise.
Thank you, Mayor. We have, uh, communicated in our staff report that the county, well, let me back up a little bit. During the legislative session, law was created that said, we're going to put this through a vote if the counties put it on, uh, the ballot and the cities can express their support or non-support to put it on the ballot. The mayor, uh, and who else did we have that day, Mayor? You and I and Jeremy.
Jeremy was here.
Met, Jeremy's here tonight, met with Mayor Adams and he expressed his, uh, desire for the cities to communicate if they support it or not. This resolution has been prepared by the League of Cities and Towns as a model draft. Uh, we didn't make any changes to it, while I recognize some of members of the council may not like certain language. We've left it this way and if you wanted to strike out sections and say, well, it's flattering, pretty, but we don't want it. We've just left that for you, two a man here at the dais as you choose. Jeremy is also here this evening, if you have any questions. Uh, the thing that we want to stress is, is this is not approving the tax. This is only communicating to the council whether the city desires to have it on the ballot or not. The, the voters will actually make the vote. So Jeremy's here, if you have any further questions of more detail to answer for you. Is there anything you'd like to ask him?
Maybe, just one second. Councilmember McConaughey.
No questions, just suggestions for changes of all, all hotel.
Okay, Councilmember Hega.
We need roads, we need money for roads and our legislature, uh, passed a legislation that allowed our county, our county to, uh, put to vote, if they vote, uh, a tax question to the, the residents. Not, not our city council, that's why things need to be come out of this. It's not us saying that we want this vote, it's, uh, the decision will be the county council. This resolution, as far as the conclusions, I'm in favor, favor of, because I want better roads, if the residents vote for it. And, um, but I, I, as far as a lot of the, the reasons they're taking this as a resolution, I'm against. So I'm going to oppose these things unless somebody does make some, um, a motion to strike some issues. Um, I'm offended frankly as a passport member of the obesity action coalition, national, or the, the utile league, talks about obesity and overweight and equates that to, um, taxes and why we should spend more money. So I have a problem with that line. Um, but again, I, I, I'll probably end up honestly bugging against this just because the responsibility is not on us as a city council, it's on the county council. And I called Amy Winter Newton, I called Steve DeBry and I called them and I said, I want this on the ballot this year. I would just say to all our residents, as your councilmen, call your council council, if you want this on the ballot for this year, have them put it on the ballot. But as far as, uh, putting the responsibility on the city councils, I think went overboard a little bit, that's my opinion. Thanks, Mayor.
Before I'm going to go back to you, I just wanted to make a couple of things perfectly clear. The county is looking to each city to represent their residents of each city and state whether they would like to have this on the ballot, period. The citizens, the voters will decide if they, uh, choose to place this tax on. There's a lot of complaints about transportation and other issues. This, for West Jordan, really solves a lot of our issues, but I'm not here proposing that you vote for the tax on yourself. I think that's something that the citizens have to look at, the way, whether it's valued or not. I will support absolutely putting it on, allowing the citizens to decide if this vote comes. I would like to see a resolution that's pared down to almost nothing that just says, and I hope that my colleagues would state, that unanimously, the West Jordan City Council supports placing this on the ballot and allowing the residents to decide if they want this tax to go in place. So that's what I'll state now, I'll turn the time to Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor, I think you, uh, stated many of my thoughts very, uh, very clearly as well. I think we probably should have spoken before because it seems like you were very into on this. Um, I would suggest we take a, a, a hatchet to this and whittle it down to just the last two whereas statements, which says, whereas the Utah State Legislature recognizes local transportation needs and enacted HB three sixty-two to give an option, and whereas City West Jordan will upon county position of voter approval, receive a portion of that. I'd like to keep just those two whereas. And then indeed, therefore let it be resolved, uh, I just want to keep section two and section seven. Section two says, uh, so therefore, we would encourage submission of the proposal to the voters of Salt Lake County in the next election. And goes on a little bit there about what would be on there. And then section seven says that, um, we would distribute a copy of this resolution to the appropriate people, uh, within county and state government. I would pare it down to just that. So the last two whereas statements, section two and section seven, and without, if there are no other comments, I would be prepared to make that a motion.
Do you have the floor?
Okay, so I will move that we approve the resolution with those changes.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey and a second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Hega.
I might be in favor of this, so Councilman, would you just clarify again which ones you've decided to keep now? Yes, so it would read, um, whereas, uh, here we go. Whereas the Utah State Legislature recognizes the local transportation, the local transportation needs and enacted HB three sixty-two, which authorizes counties to impose on voters to approval, point two-five percent local option general sales tax dedicated to local tr- transportation. And whereas the City of West Jordan will upon, this is the, the last whereas. Um, the City of West Jordan will upon county position of voter approval, receive, uh, zero point one zero of the zero point two-five percent sales tax to invest in critical tran- critical local transportation needs. Therefore, let it be resolved by the City Council of West Jordan, Utah, uh, here we have section two, encourage submission of proposal to the voters of Salt Lake County. The City Council urges the county governing body to submit the zero point two-five percent local option general sales tax dedicated to transportation, uh, to the voters of the county for the November two thousand fifteen election. The City Council, thank you. Um, I would actually strike this last sentence that said, the City Council also publicly supports the county governing body in submitting zero point two-five percent local option general sales tax, blah, blah, blah. Um, strike that last sentence, thank, thank you for that, I, I, I felt the, share that. And then section seven, uh, a copy of this shall be sent to Salt Lake County governing body, uh, ULCT, Utah Association of Counties and, and so on, those, those on the list. And I guess section eight, including the fact that they keep the appropriate include as well.
Make myself.
So I, I guess my question would be, would that second still stand with the striking of that?
Permit.
Thank you. Did you have a follow-up comment?
I do, and I appreciate the councilmen for taking initiative to turn this down and I actually will speak for it and I appreciate it. We do need better roads, but I, I'm a believer, and I hope we all are, that the voter decides. And, and everyone, if this, there's a message that goes out there from our dais, like the mayor said, it's the county that will put this on the ballot, we're endorsing them to put it on the ballot. It's you that will decide whether they raise the tax. So thank you, I'll, I'll speak in for it, thank you.
Councilmember Southworth.
Thank you, Mayor, I will be opposed to this motion, although I do appreciate the plain language. I, I love that, I love how you speak clearly and say what you mean. Um, the reason I will be opposed to it is because I resent greatly being held hostage. Our roads are being held hostage to the needs of the county and also to transit, and I know that I'm not alone there. Um, let me tell you what that, just explain what that means, this quarter percent, let's just put that in terms of, say, a quarter, for a quarter in, in tax. City of West Jordan gets ten cents, UTA gets ten cents, and the county gets five cents. Okay, I know that UTA, as a former board member, has been pushing for this quarter percent for a long, long time. They have a very powerful lobby, trying to find a way to get this, and this is how you do it. You take and you hold the cities, now we have to sit and say, darn it, we need to fix our roads. And if we don't do this, then how are we going to get this done? And you attach them to it. And that's what I mean by hold hostage, the repair of our roads. Our roads and the needs for their repair should go to the citizens and be voted on by themselves. The county should, and vice versa with the rest of them, and so should UTA. And if the, and if the voters say, yes, we want more transit, they should vote for that. If they say, I want to fix my municipal roads, we should vote for that. But to lump these in together and hold ours hostage to everybody else, I have a fundamental problem with that and I will be voting against this motion, thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I agree with the, the thought process of Councilmember Southworth. Um, I, I think he's accurate there. However, I would, um, ask that hopefully he might re, that you might hopefully reconsider your position. Um, I think that that's something that we're going to have to fix with the state and we need to petition the state to decouple this at their level. And I don't think that it would be prudent to wait for the state to fix that, uh, before we take a step that could potentially help with some of the transportation issues we have here. I agree that that's something that we need to go after, um, but I worry that, um, trying to do it this route won't be, uh, won't be as effective or would only, um, serve to prolong the current problems that we're, that we're, I, I think we need to go after that problem that you brought up, a, a different route. Thank you.
Just one more, I, I, I don't disagree, but, but what the problem I do see is if the city say, yes, go ahead, and this is voting on whether it goes up or down, let's say it's approved, it would be a cold day in hell before this ever is changed after that. If this doesn't go, the need for transportation funding is still there and it is going to be a driving force and the legislature at that point will be forced to look at it again. And that's when we have the opportunity to say, now let's change it. After it passes and it's there, and that quarter percent's there and it's being imbibed out, good luck trying to change that. And that's, that's the only thing I'm saying is, is if you want to, I don't have any problem putting this before the course, but if you think this is wrong, I think this is wrong, then you've got to stop it now before it even gets going. This train is moving and once it gets going, you can't stop it.
To stop the debate, I know you've been standing there, uh, Jeremy, but this really is about whether or not put on the ballot. Will campaign for or against it, uh, after the fact? Will campaign for or against it after the fact? The county cannot put it on the ballot in a non-presidential election year without the support of 50% or more of the cities. So that's what they've asked for. They actually, the council, the county council wants 100% of the Salt Lake County cities to support putting it on the ballot. Then we'll get into whether or not we should vote in favor or some of these are gonna shoot count. Yes, Councilmember Higa, last.
I don't wanna question the validity of that, but Jeremy, is that true that we are the leverage to the county? Because I've been told by the legislators, and I'm not questioning the mayor, but if we've had misinformation, I wanna clarify that. Or did they require 50% of the cities to sign off on this?
That, yes, that's correct.
Is that in the legislation?
It's not in the legislation. That's what the county has requested of the cities. It's not required. It's a request.
Okay, so again, the legislation gave the county authority to put this on the ballot then on an odd year, 2015, but they never said the cities have to decide. Am I right?
That's right. That's not in the, but there is an option to put it on 2015 or 2016. The county has the choice to pick either year. The request for the resolution came from the county. I'm not aware of any other counties that have made that specific request, but it's possible that they could.
The reason they're pushing to have it on the ballot is all the cities are trying for more B and C road funds. Some much worse off than we are. And so this advances it one year if the citizens decide that's what they want to place. With that, let's hold on to the motion. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Southworth.
No.
Mayor Al?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Higa?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Go pass this. Fight one in favor.
Mayor?
Please.
I would, there's no option. I would move that we adjust the agenda just slightly and next discuss business item F. I know there's some folks here who have spoken citizen comments regarding that storm water grant program and looking at the clock, and we're running late on time, and I'd like to address that now.
Motion to move item F in front of E?
Correct.
Hang on, we have a second. Motion by Councilmember McConaughey and a second by Councilmember Higa. Discussion of the motion. Seeing numbers. Can we just do it?
Are you standing to voice the vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing numbers. We will move to item F. Discussion of possible action regarding establishing a storm drain, storm water grant program.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna step down for this discussion as previously in case there are former councilors.
So you're recusing yourself on your dice, okay? Please, Justin.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an update to the draft program that we presented to you on May 13th. On May 13th, we presented to you a skeleton of the program as well as three different options for funding that. And based upon the direction you gave us on May 13th, we've gone through and we finalized the framework for that program. It includes a couple situations that are brand new to what you may see. Based upon that funding level which you approved, we have proposed that during the first year, that we allow for the cleanup of residential homes up to $10,000. They would also allow for the restoration of residential homes up to $10,000. And we allow for grants towards projects to protect a residential home from flooding up to a $10,000 limit. And we also use the money to help pay for building permits and inspection fees associated with a homeowner's initiative to modify their home. And one of the reasons why we break this into year one and year two, because the program is going to have a 12-month retroactivity to it, to be able to handle all of the flooding situations that happened last August, as well as the applications we expect to have this year, we wanted to make sure that we took care of all of these issues, the cleanup and the restoration, as part of this year within the budget that we have. Beginning in year two, we anticipate a lower number of applications for those particular items, where we'll only be serving that particular year's applications. So beginning in year two, we propose that additional major projects be added into the program, which would allow applications, if there is a home that is in jeopardy of flooding on a constant basis and is not being taken care of by any other means, that they could come in to request a major project, some assistance with that. That kind of thing, under the mitigation and the major projects, those things would be handled in coordination with the Risk Management Group and Public Works to make sure that we're finding the very best possible solution for these homeowners. Also, another brand new aspect to the program in this final framework, as opposed to the draft you saw in May, is a 45-day period that would begin with the fiscal year. That 45-day period would allow all of the people that have applications that would qualify to be able to complete their applications in a very thorough manner so that when they submit those to the city, they're not, we're not trying to rush to get a first-come-first basis, though everybody has to feel like they have to submit it on July 1st to try to get it ahead of the line. We wanna allow this 45-day period so that there is no priority list. And then from that 45-day priority, if we have, if the applications all below the $250,000, we can go ahead with funding those grants. If for some reason the applications exceed the $250,000, which we think is unlikely, then we would have that period to be able to go through and carefully determine what we can do. We just didn't want people to come in and try to rush their applications on July 1st and have incomplete applications, not be able to put in their receipts and their pictures and things that would truly justify their application. So with those two things, you know, Mrs. Brenda Thomas, in her remarks earlier this meeting, she expressed her concerns about all of the different steps that we have. And so I wanted to kind of help clear some of those things up. With this particular framework, we are done with the program itself with the following year approval. On the 24th of June, the next meeting, there'll be another application that you'll see on your agenda. And that particular application will be a text amendment to the city code, which effectively makes it legal for the city to make these payments. And that particular text amendment almost mirrors the program exactly. We worked very closely with risk managers to make sure that the text amendment and this program are completely in sync. And so it's just that text amendment just makes it possible for the city to be able to go through with the program. And then following the approval of the budget and the move into the next fiscal year, that funding becomes available for those applications. And so I hope that answers a lot of those questions. Following this approval of the framework and the budget and the text amendment on the 24th, we hope to be able to begin accepting applications on July 1st.
Okay, Steve, I dare. I was gonna make a motion, but you guys got comments or questions? Councilmember Higa first.
Thanks. I wanna say, just because he used to be on council, this gentleman was a proponent of this, so. And this is a good job. Excellent. I have one question, though. As far as the applications, who is the final decision maker?
We've talked internally about that, and we have two different items for that. For the applications that are solely for cleanup of a disaster or restoration of a home following disaster, those decisions would be made by the Risk Management Group. That's where their expertise is. They're fully capable of reviewing those. Other departments within the city are available if there's any questions regarding that. But we expect that the cleanup and restoration would be handled by Risk Management. Now, the applications for mitigation, that's where it starts to begin to include other departments within the city. So in addition to the Risk Management Group, Public Works would be involved in a mitigation project just to make sure that, you know, nobody has a monopoly on all the great ideas in this world. And so it would be a collaborative, cooperative effort. We would sit down with homeowners that wish to do mitigation projects just to make sure that we are putting in a project that is gonna maximize the benefit for their home. And then, of course, with the final, the fourth option regarding building permits and inspection fees, that would be done in coordination with our Development Office. And then in the second year, when we include those major projects, that also will include the Public Works Department, Risk Management, Finance, that kind of stuff, because of the potential of those projects.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor.
A few questions. So as I'm looking at this, the number of different purposes have been broken out, along with the dollar limitation for each. Am I to read this as there's a total of 10,000 potential per purpose? Or a total of 30,000 plus building permits?
That's correct. The intent there is that an applicant can fill out for cleanup and restoration and qualify for up to $10,000 of each of those items.
Okay. I'd like to see a little clarification in the final version because it reads, "It is intended that the funds will be used for one of the following purposes during the first year." But then the rest kind of reads as you suggested where it could be multiple. So just kind of up a little inside the sentence.
So we can change that sentence to one or more of the following?
Yeah. And maybe even put a line in there clarifying, for a total potential reimbursement up to 30,000 plus.
And the intent there is that with the cleanup costs and the restoration costs is to pay actual damages. And so if the cleanup comes out to $8,000, the grant would be for $8,000, not for 10.
Yeah.
And so we can clarify that definitely.
Yeah, that would be appreciated. Second part, you mentioned Risk Management would be getting the final approval on the cleanup that might start going into some of the other departments. If for some reason there's a question or a dispute, I'd like to see sort of a field process in there that includes maybe people from the respective departments as well as a representative on council. Preferably, I would think a council member from another district, so there's no potential conflict. And then, last question, and this is one that's, because I'm, in a similar vote with Ms. Thomas, I thought that after today, they'd be able to submit tomorrow and be good to go. Now it sounds like they can submit July 1st, but we gotta wait till August 14th. And then starting August 15th, staff will start to review process. So we've got that 40-day window for everyone to submit.
That's correct. We really are hinging upon the funding of the next budget. And then this text amendment, which needs to be approved on June 24th. And then they could begin making their applications on July 1st. But we have decided to leave that window of 45 days open so that people aren't rushing in on July 1st to try to get it up.
And that part I completely understand, and I support that. Looking at this from what I'm only guessing would be Ms. Thomas's perspective, I certainly don't mean to put words in her mouth, but I'm looking at this thinking, okay, how much of the year, how much of the summer of potential construction time is gonna go away before I can even apply for my permits? So I'm wondering if there's a way that we can speed up at least that part so she can get the permitting process going? Or not just her, but really anyone impacted? Could that be done as soon as the text amendment part's taken care of? Maybe we don't need to wait 45 days for that part? What can we do there?
I'm not sure I understand your question, Councilmember.
Okay. So before she does any work, she's gonna have to go get her permits. But now she's looking at this probably thinking, okay, I'll turn my application, and I'm not even gonna be able to really apply for the permits until after my application's been approved. So I can get my building permit sometime in August. So it's gonna be probably September before she can really start doing anything. She's gonna wanna move as quick as she can. Is there something that we can do so that just that one of those four purposes, we might be able to speed up? Were we talking about certain payment permit and inspection fees associated with the homeowner's modifications?
Yes, definitely. We can make it so if they're looking for building permit waiver fees, we can make that immediately. We can also reduce the 45-day period down to 30. We just wanna make sure that people have complete applications without feeling stressed about rushing to get their applications in.
I would wonder if we could make that building permit thing exempt from the 45-day thing?
Definitely, we can do that.
And then would we still have to wait for the text amendment to be brought back next time before we could move forward with that?
The text amendment is necessary for the city to make any payments to residents. And so...
Sorry, I think you said we're gonna go with that.
So I think if we're going to do a waiver of fees, I believe, I'm sorry?
It's not a waiver. The fees are being paid on the resident's behalf. They're coming out of the same grant fund.
Yeah, we wanna make sure we can't waive any fees.
I understand. We can't waive any fees. We can't waive those inspection fees. However, if there's not a payment being made to the resident, if we're, if the fund is paid to the city on behalf of the resident, is that something that can be done, like?
From my understanding, we still have to, we still have to have that program running on July 1st before they can do that.
We have to have the text amendment, right?
Excuse me for interrupting. We do need the text amendment. The other, my understanding of the 45-day waiting period is to ensure that you can compare the total value of all of the applications to the total amount that was budgeted to pay out the grants. So those building permit fees are still coming out of that same fund. So they're still part of the total that's being budgeted for the grant program. So if you, if you agreed to the building permit fees in advance, you would be still reducing your grant program availability on a first-come, first-served basis. You wouldn't be... And so after you evaluated all the other applications, you wouldn't have the same amount of money that you would have if you had evaluated all of the applications, including the building permit fee request together.
Which is similar to our neighborhood traffic management program, correct? Where we gather everything, evaluate it all, and then go through it.
Correct.
Yeah. However, we're not gonna be hitting, I'm hoping we're not gonna be hitting $250,000 in just building permit fees. And if we were to run out of funding, I mean, we can always revisit the total amount that's in there, but I would think we would wanna get those building permit fees first priority anyway so that residents can make those changes and we can at least help there. So understanding what that would do, I would still be in favor of removing the 45-day period for that. And maybe just having a contingency or maybe $20,000 set aside for that first 45-day window to cover that.
Okay, and we can definitely...
I'm gonna rein this back in because I don't think that, I think the whole process has to be one. It can't be, we can't put on our staff to evaluate one piece and then another piece. I believe that's probably why that time, and I'm an impatient person too, and I know you've waited a long time. And I'm afraid, being one that flooded for the first time last year, I'm afraid that we may not have enough funds available for everything to be done. 'Cause I know what I paid just for the minor flooding I had last year. But our staff has to have time to receive the applications, review the applications, and assess the amount according to the amount appropriated and make sure, 'cause it may be a pro rata, they may not get a full $10,000 for each and every event. I hope they all do, but they may not. But it'd be hard for staff to break that up in pieces and say, "Okay, we're gonna do this." And then they need to look at all the applications on an annual basis, right? Is that...
That would be wonderful.
I have other jobs to do besides, I know that this has been a topic for a long time with the council. And we wanna get this fixed, but we can't only concentrate on that. We need that timeframe.
And then I think I might change the request a little bit and say, because we've had people who've been dealing with this for years on end now, and they've been watching this closely, some of them are ready to go. And if we were, were possible, they'd be ready to submit applications tomorrow, maybe just at the, at the start of the program, and say, okay, we'll take, as a one-time exception since it's a brand-new program, we'll lower to a two-week window, and any building permits submitted or requests, and they're within that first two weeks, we'll wait two weeks, and then we'll look at it then. However, anything submitted after July fifteenth will be subject to the normal forty-five day window. I just don't want them to have to wait another year until spring to be able to start construction, because we've already seen spring flooding. We'll see flooding again in September. And if we can at least get the building permit process done, so that they can move forward with that, or if we can allow for reimbursement of building permits, like if they were to pay those building permit fees out of pocket now, allow for reimbursement of that to something, so that we can hopefully get going. I do have some suggestions, I just...
I think that's a possibility. If it's approved amount, it would be, if they even start construction and they get approved, as long as there's documentation, that's, is that kind of, we're not expecting them to wait. I believe in the case of one resident that spoke tonight, not using any names, I believe she's already gone way past that process, but my idea was we reimburse for the damage on a pro rata basis, like the other, yes.
If I could just interject, I'll tell you what, we still need to bring text language back for approval. So how about if we go ahead as a staff and put our heads together, find out if there's any areas where we can, see if we can shorten some timeframes, things like that. We had the discussion here with the diocese just talking about, could we start planner view? And I need to find out how the staff, when they charge the planner view fees and things like that, even if maybe the citizen had to pay the planner view fee, and then it's reimbursed back when they get the permit. So let us just look and evaluate if there's some things we can do to expedite. I see exactly your point, Councilmember McConaughey, and we'll bring back some suggestions, even if it's just the getting out of the gate process. Would that be fair, if we just kind of review some of those, and see if we can mitigate some times, and find some solutions to start with on this initial phase? We'll bring those back.
We can do that.
But we still need to approve the question. Yes, council member.
So, I, is this, I can find, is this a reimbursement, or is this money upfront?
It's typically a reimbursement. However, if there's a particular homeowner that has, like for example, a restoration example, if they've gone through and they've already taken care of their cleanup, and they've got receipts for cleaning up their home, removing damaged carpet and drywall, but they have never gone back to restore it, but they do have a quote from a contractor to do so, that we could accept that quote towards the grant to help pay for those restoration costs.
Well, understood. The reason I ask is, if, if these have to be evaluated, if we have a concern that we may, we may use all the funding, I think it's kind of like, I don't know, we're debating whether you can pay for those upfront. If everything's reimbursed, why would we pay for the permit fees upfront, when we don't even know we have a project yet? I don't, I'm not following.
That's why I think that we have to look at holistically.
Yeah, exactly.
It's not impartial.
You've got to, same as our traffic management, we've got to take all of these and say, okay, here they are, and this one here, we've got, these, these qualify. Wow, perfect. These ones we've got questions on, we've worked through this and what have you, and then you take the lot, and you say, all right, now they're ranked, and here's what we're going to do. Maybe we have the money. Traffic management, we've had, I don't know, maybe one year where we've had to say, all right, we've got to pick and choose. The rest of the year's we have enough money. And I expect that would be the case here. But, but either way, you've got it. You've got to line those up and rank them, and then if this is a reimbursement situation, then a homeowner's going to go spend the money on permits, spend the money on the repairs, and then come back in and say, here's my pre-approved projects, I spent the money, here's my receipts, great, here's your check, and now I'm going to reimburse. And if that's, I kind of thought that's the way it worked, and if that is the case, then we don't need to talk about when somebody gets reimbursed or not. Anyway, so, but we can work that out. I had another comment or a question I had, a clarification. This says it's the stormwater grant program, and it talks about flooding, whatever, but later on, like in year one, it talks about qualifying for, say there was an event, a flood or something like that. It leaves out this stormwater reference, and I'm wondering if somewhere in there, in the language needed to define what a flood is, because I can anticipate, somebody will come and say, well, we've actually flooded, does this count? Well, you need to have some kind of definition. It may be in there, I just didn't see it.
It's very observant. We intentionally left the flooding out of the major projects description. In case there is a natural disaster that greatly impacts the city, whether it's earthquakes or whatever, we intentionally left the term stormwater out of that, just to allow the city flexibility in those particular situations. It is a stormwater grant program. The program is designed to take care of cleanup and restoration due to flooding. But it is intended to be a holistic approach to risk management, to disasters, whether it's, you know, anything that can happen in the future. We just don't know, three years down the road, maybe there's no flooding situations, but we have an earthquake or a wild fire that rips into a neighborhood. We wanted to be able to at least have some flexibility in the program to be able to, the mayor and council to be able to address those issues as well.
I only brought it up, and I couldn't understand if it's an earthquake, if somebody gets flooded, it's not a storm, but as long as it doesn't allow somebody to say, well, the neighbor kid dropped a hose in my window well, flooded my house, now I need, it's a flood, right? This is for floods. No. So as long as we're covered there, I'm good.
Right. And the program is written in a way that to be able to qualify, they have to be in a location of the stormwater flooding.
Okay, okay.
And so, you don't end up with a window of...
That's fine. The last sentence, or last paragraph of under year one, talks about the grant money is not intended to replace a homeowner's responsibility to properly convey. All of that, is that some legal CYA stuff, or what's that all about?
That is designed to basically say, if, if your flooding source is coming from your neighbor's property, rather than from the street, that's really an issue between you and your neighbor, rather than you and the city. We're, it's not the city's responsibility to pay for grants because your neighbor flooded you. It's meant to be taken care of, of public stormwater from the right way.
It goes on to say, or an owner's decision to purchase or build a home with a reverse grade driveway, a home sitting lower than the street. And we have situations that we're addressing, that specific situation. But then it seems to be excluding that.
No, it's not to exclude them from grants, it basically is just saying the city's not responsible for the driveway.
Okay. We're not accepting responsibility.
Right.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Councilmember McConaughey.
I won't say one last thing, I'll say one more thing.
So if I can kind of clarify that last comment, you know, in there it talks about...
You got it.
Or an owner's decision to purchase or build a home with a reverse grade driveway, or a home sitting lower than the street. It, I mean, we completely strike that line, because the intent is to help homeowners with their cleanup and restoration. The intent there is just that it's, the city's not at fault because there's a reverse grade driveway. But it's, it's, it's kind of a CYA, we can take that out.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. We'll try again. One additional thing I'd like to see added in this is, if for some reason we don't have enough funding in one year, let's say somebody had, they were only to get eighty percent of their claim paid because of funding restrictions, I'd like to be able, I'd like to see them be able to submit again the following year, maybe there won't be as much demand the following year, but our remaining twenty percent. So if it's not fully paid out, they have the chance to apply for additional funds subsequent years. The other thing that I'd like to see is a little bit of clarification on those totals, the ten thousand per issue. Is that a per event maximum? Maybe they do some changes in the front yard, and that chews up all of that, but then they also have flooding on the side yard, so they treat that as a separate event. Is that a per address total lifetime period? I'd just like to see some clarification, or maybe it's intended to be left a?
I guess we're open to direction on that.
I guess I'd ask legal, if we had additional clarification there, but I'll leave that for a later date, since I know we're almost out of time to meet some of them. But being able to resubmit in future years, if they're not able to get full reimbursement was my bigger concern. Thank you.
Councilmember Haga.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we extend the meeting till, or suspend the rules and extend the meeting till nine-thirty.
One clarification, do we not, it's not a rule, that's city code, right? So we really don't have the liberty to suspend any rules. We could break code, break law, but I don't think we can suspend a rule, right?
Can I make a statement?
Yes, please.
In light of the last meeting I was at, when Councilmember Nichols brought it up, I made sure and read that section of the code that he had quoted, and it does state that if the council wants to go past the nine o'clock, they have to make a motion, and it has to pass in favor, with, by majority vote.
Oh, okay.
It does say it in the, in the code, that we can make a motion, but it has to pass by majority vote.
That was motion seconded.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Haga, second by Councilmember Southworth. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? We'll go to nine-thirty.
Just one real quick question. All that I respect our residents, and I think this is an awesome job, really, that the staff's done. Just follow our turnings. I think we've got to do things legally right, and we've got to do it right the first time, because if we don't, we'll be in trouble. So sometimes in our city, we just rush it too fast, and sometimes we regret it. So follow our experts is all my suggestion, and isn't a great piece for our residents to solve some issues. But we've got to follow government processes.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion. I move that we approve the proposed storm drain program as presented, with the direction for staff to bring back the exact language that was being discussed tonight, and we will vote on it on the twenty-fourth. Yeah, a motion by Mayor Roth, two seconds, one by Councilmember McConaughey. Discussion of the motion.
One more question I forgot to ask, is this purely a, I don't know how to describe this, is it a matching type form, or is it just a gift?
It's meant to be a gift.
Okay.
It's a hundred percent funding.
Okay, thank you.
Let's roll.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Southworth?
Uh, excuse me? Aye.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Go pass this by in favor.
Councilmember Southworth?
Mayor, I'd move to take a short five-minute break.
I second that. Discussion of the motion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? Five minutes only, please.
You know I did that.
Yeah, the point of that was that it's just...
Okay, you're right. Because I don't know.
But the county tells me that the city is about it, and it...
We love Ron.
Yes, thank you. I, yeah. Sat about the county, yeah.
Remember Ron? That's why I wondered if I hadn't been noticed. Ron Hot Town?
Then they're going to change, it remains the same, except for that record's going to be retained, right?
Yeah, that's what I got.
And the forty-five days still in fact. Okay, that's, you guys, you guys, are you...
I mean, I want you guys to have complete applications, have time to be able to put in a, make a description of what the problem is, so put your best case over that.
And, so we're still at the point where we're going to, with patience, we're doing restoration and with patience, if, um, one reason that we get on that, if it's redone and then...
That's, that's one of the comments. Just being able to roll over and down, it's not, okay? Or the certified, you know, we'll just have to take our best guess. So we don't have the money. Okay, then most of it, we still have time, because there's going to be rain coming in August. I think we're much better in the choice than we do. We don't want to just, we do, first of all. They approved the contract, so they'll probably begin the construction meeting next week, and then they'll, so they'll possibly start, they'll probably start some workers out there in the next, two weeks. Just to be able to, they're going to have to give them a little appointment ready and be out there.
So we have three more, help layers.
Good job. Three more. No, that one, okay, go, we're crossing on H.
So we still have E, G.
E and G, and then the two, it's the same, and then we've got...
Go ahead, stay up there. Item nine, E, discussion and possible action regarding the LED streetlight replacement for the acquisition of fixtures and installation.
Yes.
Thank you, mayor and council. Just as an update to where we stand on the LED streetlight project, we ran into a few delays with some of the people that were providing samples to us. That took a little bit longer than we expected. We started to receive salesman samples that plug into outlets, and we didn't receive them properly packaged, and we were received, there was just some people that just didn't send us anything. So we ran into some delays receiving those samples. We finally received everything that we asked for earlier today, and we began prep work to be able to do some on-street installations of some of these samples. And we'll let the council know of when, we're going to do a nighttime walkthrough, a nighttime viewing of all of these samples, and we'll let the council know when that's going to happen, so you can be a part of the evaluation of the streetlights, when there's, at least the samples after they're installed on the, on the streetlight. A couple months ago, at the utility workshop, a number of questions came up in there with regards to the LED streetlights. And I attempted to write down all of the questions that came up in that, and then I pressed our representative with Rocky Mount power to try to get a better idea of, the answers to some of those questions. And that included, how much would the rebate be, how much electricity would we be saving by changing out the fixtures, and that kind of information. And I provided an update in the staff report. If there's any questions with that, and then there's a second part to this presentation.
Questions? Councilmember Hanson.
Mine isn't on the rebate or anything. As we replace poles, are we going to be powder coating them?
I'm sorry, as we replace poles?
Uh-huh.
The intent right now is not to replace any poles.
But as we have developers put them into new developments, are we... But as we have developers put them into new, new developments, are we going to require the back flak?
Um, that's definitely something I can work with our development team.
I think that that would be a good idea, because then you have the rusting out on that type of thing, that, you know, I look at the one sitting on the corner of my lot, which looks really bad.
Right now, a lot of our poles are fiberglass.
Well, mine isn't.
Just to add to that, Justin, I requested a year ago that we get a design for solar-powered rather than electric-powered LED streetlights that I'd like to start being required on new development, so that we don't have to pay a power bill and they last for twenty-plus years.
Yes, Mayor, we looked, we looked into that, and we consulted several different cities, and UDOT, I know the example was brought up about the solar power lights that were long in Mountain View corridor. And many of the recommendations we got, including from UDOT, is that they're not cost-effective. And the payback is too great to be able to fund solar power stuff.
But there's no, there's no cost to the city for the developers to put those in with their development. That should just be a requirement, as I see it, because we pay the power bill from that time forward, whereas we would only be replacing bulbs and/or solar panels if we required that in the development. So, I, I, I can see why UDOT would look at it that way, but from a city standpoint, I think it's something that we should.
From, from the purpose of replacing our existing poles, the recommendations we were getting from UDOT is that you would have, rather than just changing out the fixture on the existing poles, we would have to replace the poles with a reinforced structure. We'd have to put a vault in the ground to, to house a battery system.
Yeah, I'm not, I wasn't pretending that. I just wanted to add on to Councilmember Hanson's, because I requested it a year ago, and I haven't seen anything. I'm, I'm talking about new development only, not, not endless replacement. I wanna go with what you, I'm sorry.
I can provide an update.
Remind you of that.
Can I ask a qualifying question?
Yes.
Our, our, utility, your power rate, isn't that based, it's a, it's a bulk rate of some sort, is it not?
Yes.
So, I'm wondering how much, I see where you're going, but I wonder how much impact that would have on our, our power bill in, in the long run? Because it wouldn't be a significant amount of the city.
You know, you know.
Hold on, Councilman, I'm, I'm almost, I'm almost finished here. It, it wouldn't be a significant impact, but it would be to the cost of building homes and developers, which would be passed on to future homeowners. So, I just wonder, we gotta weigh out those costs and if it is right.
Well, it would be a significant impact with the development we're doing, and you'd get charged per light.
Would you be able to adjust in the mind?
I have the floor at this moment. You would see a dramatic, because it's charged per light throughout the city. The five thousand, fifty-five hundred lights we add.
So then count the lights and then?
Yeah. So, over time, it would, you're right.
Yeah.
First, it would be insignificant, but as development progresses, it, over the years, it would become significant.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Councilmember Haga.
Thanks, Mayor. Justin, or Mr. Schoker, can you find out for us, you know, I, I questioned the UDOT option. Not that it might be more expensive if there's power available, but however, if you go along Mountain View corridor, and I travel that quite a bit at night or during the day, you'll see major LED lights with one or two solar panels on it. Can you find out the, the numbers on those, those poles? In other words, how, how much power they gather, are they self-sustaining? Because I see them, see them on every night.
I, I don't wanna derail this conversation to a solar project.
Yeah.
But I mean, I get to, to try to attempt to answer your question, we have contacted UDOT about those, and they said that if power was readily available, they would not have put solar on that. That the situations where they put the solar on the poles, they said power was impossible, it was impossible, it was his word, to reach those poles with wires. And they, they would not do that if, if they had.
Would you mind getting the numbers from UDOT form?
On the cost of the poles?
Of what, that, one of their poles is performing. Those are calculations that an engineer can do.
Are, are you asking how much electricity?
If you look at Mountain View corridor, about one hundred and thirty-four, that, one hundred and thirty-fourth south, they have major streetlights with solar power, no power going through them. They're on all night. Can't we get a performance measure on those? That's really what I think we're asking is, we want LEDs. But there's other parts of our city that are dark because they don't have power. Dark corners, parks, things like that, but the sun can generate the power.
From the discussions I had with UDOT, and we, we didn't, we didn't talk about specific poles, but they did give me a ballpark figure that it costs about ten thousand dollars per fixture out there to make it a solar, a solar light.
We kinda got off track with my statement. Could you just bring it back? We're not talking.
I'm sorry. So, if there are no other questions with regards to the rebates and the power savings, there's some direction that we need to get with regards to the actual installation of the lights. We're really close to be able to selecting the actual fixtures. We had, again, like I, as I mentioned before, we have received all of the samples, and we're gonna be installing those in some select neighborhoods for a nighttime performance evaluation. And we'll then allow the, the council opportunity to view those. But the next step towards this entire project is with regards to who is going to be doing the actual replacement of the fixtures. In the utility workshop, it was discussed of, about having in-house crews being able to do that. And I've gone through and I've done an analysis on, on what that means, and have provided three options in your staff report. Just to run really quickly through those, option one is to be able to con, if we contract out all of that work so that a licensed electrician under contract was doing that separate from the city, we figured that would cost about fifty dollars per light fixture for a total amount of about quarter million dollars, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a contract to replace all of those light fixtures. And that's separate from the actual cost of the fixture. We would still be purchasing those. Option number two would be to have the city staff perform all of the, all of the light fixtures in-house. With that, comes a slight discussion with our current city staff. Currently, the, the city has a master electrician and an apprentice electrician. Those two, those two alone are occupied with a number of electrical needs around the city. Whether it's in facilities, or whether we're wiring up SCADA equipment, or replacing electrical stuff at utility pump houses or what, those two individuals are extremely busy. If the intent is for the city staff to perform the installation, we would ask for a reclassification of one of the street maintenance workers, from street maintenance one to an apprentice electrician. He's currently already spending ninety percent of his time doing electrical work. And then we would ask for another apprentice electrician, so we have two viable teams. On the twenty-fourth agenda, we intend to present kind of a restructuring to better balance the electricians out between an electrician and an apprentice, to better spread that between their trade levels, between an apprentice electrician, a journeyman electrician, and then a master electrician, and to better match the market rates for that. These all kind of fall underneath the umbrella as if the council would like us to perform all of those installations in-house. The third option is kind of a mix between those. There are several fixtures that are either close to overhead power lines or in otherwise dangerous situations. None of the electricians on our city staff are, are trained to be able to work near overhead power lines. And so we would ask in, in those particular situations that we go out to contract with somebody that is licensed to work near Rocky Mount power lines to be able to handle those particular light fixtures. And we expect that to be a very, very small quantity. We're looking at changing out five thousand lights, and we expect the ones that are near overhead power be around maybe two hundred lights. But again, we're, we're just looking for the council direction on how you'd like these lights to be installed.
Could you just repeat how much you estimated the cost, the first option, if we went out all contracted? I didn't hear you.
Yes, Mayor. If, if we were to go out to contract, we estimated that it would be fifty dollars per light, and we have five thousand lights roughly, five thousand lights we're looking to switch out, which comes out to a total contract of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I'd just like to weigh in, before we go to comments, that I believe we should contract it all out. I changed my, I know that's not what I've been talking, but I believe if we get it down to that cost, we should contract it by licensed contractor.
If, I'm sorry, if I may, add a little bit of additional information to option number two. The reclassifications we figured between the street maintenance one, and then cleaning up the way that the structure is, we estimate that as less than ten thousand dollars in cost. It's really just rewriting job descriptions and putting people in a better pay bracket for the type of work that they do.
I might add that I'd still want to do that irregardless, because we, I still want the lights maintained to a much higher level than currently exist. There may be as many as fifty percent of the streetlights out right now as they sit, so. Councilmember McConaughey had a question.
Thank you, Mayor. In here with regard to option three, you, or the staff report says, with this option, there would still be need for staff changes to be able to meet the demand for their services. Does that mean even with option three, you'd be proposing hiring one more person, or would that just be the reclass?
That, that's correct. In addition to the reclass, which we would fix, the, the, the two electricians we currently have and the street maintenance worker is to hire a fourth individual, so we have two functioning teams. In many ways, electricians work as a master and an apprentice type of situation. And so if we have a master and an apprentice, and we have a journeyman and an apprentice, we would have two viable electrical teams to be able to handle. We could put one team on streetlights, and we could put another team on utilities and facilities, and we can mix them around to kind of keep their lights interesting. But it would, it, we would, we would prefer to have two functioning teams of two electricians to be able to handle that.
Councilmember Haga.
On the contractors, have we gone out for RFPs on that? Is that just estimate?
No, Councilmember. The, the number that I got there, the two hundred and fifty thousand was by, it was a rough estimate by surveying other municipalities. And no official work has been done to solicit any bids.
I, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we move forward with option one.
Second. Have a motion by Councilmember Nichols, a second by Councilmember Southworth. Discussion of the motion.
Based on time, I'll withhold my discussion because I'm supporting that.
Let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Go pass this by in favor.
Okay, in the interest of time, item H is removed from the agenda. I think, I would like to get the consent items, because I think they're important, and then hit the budget before we wrap up and we can move the other items to the next meeting. So, consent item E. Councilmember Haga, you pulled this item.
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanna express my vote on this one.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember McConaughey.
I move to approve consent item E.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion of the motion. Councilmember Haga.
I wanted to, I couldn't make the motion, then you would not pass, but I'm kind of, I'm opposed to this motion because I think it's a little steep as far as the price of the attorneys that we are hiring for this situation. I, I'd like to see the staff kind of reevaluate, because we're, we're talking almost two hundred and fifty dollars now for median lawyer, so that would be my opposition to item E. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Hanson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I am going to go in favor of this, because I do believe that this attorney firm does have some history with us and with what, what they would be working on, so they wouldn't be starting from scratch. So, I would be in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Let's vote.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Haga?
No.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Go pass this by in one in favor.
Consent item seven F, approved, resolution fifteen dash one zero eight, authorizing the mayor to execute change order number five with Kodiak construction incorporated for the Bingham Creek Culvert Improvement Project for an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars eighty-two cents. Councilmember Haga.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, mainly pulled this, I haven't been able to get a call back. I just, you know, the Bingham Creek Culvert, from my understanding, was on Twenty-two Hundred West. Is this a different one, or is it, this is different Culvert from the twenty-first? Do you think the thirteenth West one?
As Councilmember, there are two parts to this. There's one on Twenty-two Hundred West, and there's one on Forty-Fifth West.
Forty-Fifth West.
And this, this represents the Forty-Fifth West.
I move to pass consent item M.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Haga, and a second by Councilmember Hanson. Discussion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Go pass this by in favor.
Okay, back to public hearing item A A. You wanted to see the presentation, or a part of it?
I was gonna say, Council, are you just looking for what has changed from what we talked about last time to what has happened now? All right. Well, I'll turn the time over to Eric and let him kind of walk through those changes with you then.
Mayor, could I just interject with a question? It's our understanding this meeting will adjourn at nine thirty unless you make any other changes, so we'll just urge Eric to be brief.
Yeah, I, I just want them to get the information they need. If you wanna ask a question, please do. Anybody?
No, I, I would just add on to that, that the council meeting afterwards, we still have the municipal building redevelopment agency and Fairway State meetings as well.
Yeah.
Okay. This, this PowerPoint has been previously submitted to you last week. And, and here, you know, I, I can go through these, or I can leave it just to questions.
I think you'll just leave it to questions. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. My big question is, last time we spoke briefly about additions to staff, in that last council meeting, are those reflected in here? And then my other question would be the impact of the HR questions that were alluded to earlier. What would the, I, I assume the HR requests are not included in this, is that right?
Right, the HR.
That is correct. They are not included in this.
They're not. Now, for clarification, because there's, there's various things kind of floating around. Line two here is, is adding the funding for the career ladder program, a hundred and eighty-two thousand seventy-nine dollars. That is included in the budget, and as, as we talked in the workshop, those were in the middle column of the, of the presentation that we looked there, things that needed to be added and would be added.
And I think your question is on the concrete crew that we talked about two weeks ago?
Yes.
That is line four in this PowerPoint presentation, the adding of the concrete crew through C-road funding.
And that is tied back on the front end on the revenue side to the additional six hundred and fifty thousand that we're saying we're gonna get in C-road money from the legislation that passed. So, that, that affects the C-road world and not the other.
Yeah, that's primarily what I wanted to say. I wanted to make sure that we did include the request from HR. I, I do support what they've requested. I, I do support what they've requested. However, I do not support the idea of hiring additional crews for what I believe will be a temporary project, even though we can make the supposition that there's going to be additional work to keep them busy. I would rather we contract that out rather than increase our, our staff to, to tackle that. Plus, um, given timeline, I think we might be able to attack it faster and quicker by contracting out rather than increasing staff. Um, I worry about making the commitment in perpetuity to having those additional people here. And, and, and that, that's the one I really have issue with, so. Thank you.
Councilmember Hagan.
Yeah, Eric, um, on, uh, would you want to go into the stormwater, um, negative line item? I don't know where it is, could you have it?
Uh, is it on the expenditure side? Okay.
So, uh, have you taken the council's direction then to forgive, uh, loan on the stormwater?
In, in this scenario, that is the track that we've taken, is this, I think it's assuming. I don't think you've taken action yet, but that you will, uh, cancel that debt.
So, um, yeah, is, does the current final budget that we, that might be approved tonight reflect that loan, um, forgiveness on the stormwater?
It, it removes that payment that, uh, twenty-five thousand.
So there'll be two million dollars that will be.
It does not reflect that element of it.
But we, there's no longer going to be a payment made to the general fund from the stormwater.
Right, that is, that is where it is right now.
Thank you very much.
As, as it.
And then I'm, I, I'm, I'm agree with Councilman, uh, McConaughey. Last council member, member meeting, we talked about, we want our sidewalks saved, but we didn't necessarily want to hire more people. We wanted to go, from my perspective, I thought we had a unanimous consent, a whole contract. So are you proposing on the budget for this next year that we're hiring people?
Uh, yes.
Is it, you, you want to go about, it's four hundred, how much is it? Four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, is that, uh, crew, is that labor, is that a FTE?
Aye. Yes, that's, that's FTEs plus all the equipment that they would need to be able to run that crew.
Uh, so, so for instance, I believe that it would be, if we're getting additional, uh, large vehicles, it would include the lease payments for those vehicles. All the operating costs associated with that.
Um, then on the career ladders, now, again, that gets vague to me, you know. We voted on an eight-step for the police and the fire department. And is this eight-step their program, or is it the, uh, uh, every, every other employee? Because they have a fourteen-step, are we changing that in some way?
No, the fourteen-step, uh, plan is still intact, the eight-step plan for public safety is still intact. This is, uh, you know, that's essentially separate from that, uh, as, as Chief Diamond has talked before, uh, you know, having, well, I don't know, maybe he can even.
Probably the best way to explain it is what the career ladder is. If, if you have a police officer one, they'll have certain requirements, that if they meet those requirements, they can become an officer two. And this money takes care of moving officer ones to officer twos, twos to threes. It also includes public works people. It, this is a citywide career ladder program, so it's for not just the people in public safety, but both in the eight-step and the fourteen-step plan.
Does this include, uh, the cost of living range too, or is this, uh?
That's not reflected in these numbers. In the original, there's a one point three percent cost of living adjustment built into the numbers that are, are set for adoption, uh, when you adopt the budget.
Come back one, I have one more question. I'm sorry, I don't have this in front of me, the paper version. The, yeah, the, the, the vehicle lease, now, um, you know, I saw this, we have six million dollars in fleet. And I'm, I'm questioning why we have eight hundred thousand dollars as a negative. Uh, what's that about?
Okay, let me.
I was unable to s- I know how much we have in fleet, which is six million dollars.
Let me try to get to the right, the right place here. Okay, so this change in eight hundred thousand is, well, it's, it's mostly associated with, with some of those additions of, and that Sea Road funding, uh, for the concrete crew, as well as, uh, green sheet, so to speak, for the water fund that we added for new vehicles, in which we now have some big capital expenditures. And we're now, in, instead of, instead of contributing to the reserves, we're actually gonna be using them because we're gonna make the big payment initially and then receive annual payments in the future to repay that.
Then just one last question on it, because this, yeah, I, this is a budget, I understand, you know, um, it's, it can be amended, you know, uh, whatever happens tonight, because a lot of our revenue will catch up with us. Uh, I've learned that over being on council, kept, in a couple of months. So I'm not so nervous about what we pass tonight, other than the fund balance and how much we're dipping into the fund balances, four point eight nine dollars. And I, I frankly really, until I see justification of some of these other expenses, I, I don't think I can support this budget, so just saying that, basically because you're taking almost five million dollars out of our savings account at the city, so. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly going back to the concrete crew, Justin, I don't mean to put you on the spot, uh, maybe, maybe in the information. But on the concrete crew, we talked about the millions of dollars of concrete need to replace. If I remember right, is it upwards of, is like thirty million dollars, it was a lot of sidewalks. Uh, so the question is, with a full-time concrete crew and all the sidewalk projects that we have slated now, is there an estimate amount of time it's gonna take a full-time crew to complete that work?
There is not, no. The, one of the benefits of having an, an in-house crew over contracting out is we have the flexibility to, to tell those particular, uh, members that morning which sidewalk to go after. Um, we have a little bit more control over, if we receive reports of a hazardous sidewalk, we can jump right on it. Um, the, the total cost of deficiencies in the sidewalks, uh, hasn't been surveyed completely. Uh, we've been working with some interns from the University of Utah who helped us out in the spring, and they were walking every street in, in the city, and they're about halfway through. So we've really only truly surveyed half the city when it comes to ADA ramps, uh, sidewalk deficiencies. Um, and, and we're planning on presenting a proposal to the council, uh, in the coming months to address a, a replacement program for sidewalks and priority lists and that kind of such. Uh, did that answer your question?
Yeah, that, that does. Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions?
Oh, Councilmember Southworth. Just one, one quick thing, a clarification, and, and, and maybe there was just a, a slip of the tongue here, but you don't. It, it was implied that, that, the, the staff are spending five million dollars over. But that's not the case. It's the council through our priorities and the things that we've done and committed ourselves to, and the changes in, you know, what, what our pay and our step systems and everything we've done. That's why we're spending the five million. I just wanted to clarify, it's not the staff that came up with this. It's, it's the council through our policies and what we said. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
One other thing that we need to realize is we can't budget in savings that we know comes from rollover of employees, so there's, uh, wage savings and things like that, and we've communicated that several times. So I think it's important to note that while we show a fund balance, uh, use of this four to five million dollars, we know there are savings that come during the year, and there's just no way to budget for that. So let's recall that we've talked about some of those possibilities and where they are. And that's why, as Councilmember Hagan says, you adjust the budget as you need to. If they're not coming in as healthy for revenue or some of these savings, uh, we may have to tighten the belt a little bit mid-year.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thanks, I turned my light off, I wasn't expecting that. Uh, Mayor, thank you very much. I move that we approve resolution fifteen dash one twelve, adopting our budget. Hope would rise. Do you have a comment with that?
Uh, there was the concern that we put career ladders in place, but we had several of these other wage things that didn't affect employees who were in career ladders. And while I recognize that's another two hundred thousand dollars total, and maybe we earmarked some yes and some no, but we would be failing to, uh, address some of these other issues. So that was the other thing that I just wanted to make sure we at least had you consider, uh, going into this approval of this resolution.
And that was the list from HR?
Yes, on June fifth, and I can quickly identify these. Education reimbursement, twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, I know people are excited for this. To me, that's one of those things that could sit on the shelf and say, this year's just not gonna work. Job reclassifications, these are people who don't fit into the career ladders, and, uh, they are working at a higher rate of work or performance. And so this is across all departments. It's been estimated a hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. Positionary, uh, consolidation, we call it squishing. What this is, is people who used to be in career ladders, maybe we had a administrative assistant one and two, uh, that didn't pass the test as they went through the process. So we're saying we're gonna redo that scale so that we don't have these ones and twos, they didn't meet the career ladders. That is estimated at forty-three thousand dollars for those positions. The next one is competitive plus advantage. When you recall, we did the wage survey. Time moves on, things are changing all the time, and so you told us, let's make sure we're not falling behind. So every year, the staff looks at one-fifth of the jobs and evaluates them. Out of all the jobs that were evaluated, and I think it was close to thirty, about half of those have fallen behind. And so this, uh, competitive plus means that we would move those jobs up to competitive nature, so we aren't falling behind. Parks was one of the ones that, yes, we've had several positions slide. And then the last one was, is we've talked to you about the interns.
Call the question, Mayor.
Uh, the questions you called that requires a vote?
Need a second.
We need the second to vote.
We have a motion on the table, I just called a question.
Yeah, requires a second, right, to vote. Okay, continue.
Two last items. The competitive plus advantage is twenty-four thousand, eight thirty-five. And then the last one's interns. We've talked about the benefit of paying all of our interns ten fifty an hour. That keeps us able to avoid any, uh, legal actions of using interns improperly, and that was communicated, the police include that. We had staff put that in green sheets, and so when green sheets weren't approved, we're bringing that to you and saying we really need sixteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. So that's the summary of all those items. Thank you.
Can you clear out your motion?
Are we, are, do we have a motion on the table?
You did?
So, we don't want a second. I guess I'll take the floor with that, because it was kind of a continuation by motion. So my motion will be to approve resolution fifteen dash one twelve, including the items that rises for the.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Councilmember Southworth. Discussion. Councilmember McConaughey?
Would you be willing to remove the concrete crew from that?
I'll accept the amendment.
Then I would support the motion.
Yeah, if you accept, I'll accept it.
Still have a motion with the amendment. Councilmember Hagan?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna oppose the budget, passing the budget, not because we, um, it's, it's very well done. I, I compliment our staff, um, but there's some expenditures I just can't, um, accept. That's my personal opinion as a representative of the residents. But I, I, I think most, the majority of the, the budget is correct. But I, I do have issues with spending almost five million dollars. And to this date, I still haven't seen the justification for it. From beginning my, my term last year, um, our budget has grown nine million dollars. And that's, that's a lot of, a lot of spending, and, um, as one, I don't like to see government grow. I liked, I want to see us grow economically. I don't necessarily want to see more staff, more things. I want more growth in our economy. And, uh, but I'll oppose this just because it's taking our fund balance, and I don't know if you saw that, if Ryan might put it back on there, from twenty-five percent down to sixteen percent. Um, and that's a lot, that's a, a chunk of change of our residents that you gotta consider when you're passing this bu- budget if we're gonna spend that money wisely. Thanks, Mayor.
I do think I need a little more time. I know that we're trying to get this passed, but, uh, there's some, I've got the whole stack here. Been going through it and, and I, I am one in favor of the concrete crew because I don't think the concrete crew will ever catch up with just the deficiencies. But, um, I'll get opposed to the motion just based on a few of those items. Let's vote.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
No.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
Very soft, no.
The motion passes for adjourned.
Can, can I get a point of clarif- clarification? Do we need a super majority to pass the budget?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, just wondering, because we have an absent member, just wondering.
Okay, I need, I need a table, uh, I need a motion to table item, uh, G until next meeting.
So moved?
Second. A motion, uh, second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Nay.
And you had a comment now?
I do, i- if we're, if we're done the meeting to the point that I could just make a real quick comment.
Yeah, I just like your final remark.
Real fast, I have a citizen bring to my attention that the, uh, un- the inavailability of a city flag out in the community, if somebody wanted to fly the flag in the United States, or the state, or their favorite, uh, college, it's pretty easy to come by, but if they love their city and want to fly the flag in their city, they can't get a hold of one now. I don't think we need to be in the business of, of, of producing flags and selling them, but we could sure offer that to, uh, you know, some of the, the businesses that are around, or even provide graphics if somebody could make one. But, but anyway, that was brought to my attention that, that they were actually even turned down and told that that's not even an option. I find that kind of surprising, and I would like to throw that up to council if that's maybe something that we could, uh, I don't know that there's much of a demand for that, but if there is, we ought to be able to fill it and so that if somebody has pride in their city, like, uh, uh, we do, that we could fly that flag proudly. So.
So if we could just find out who manufactures them and, uh, maybe make that available?
Yeah, I guess my only question would be, we've talked about the use of the logo and who can use it and give them permission.
Sure.
I think flags are fantastic, but the question is, is are there any concerns that it could be used inappropriately in any places that could bring discredit to the city? And I can't imagine what they are, but you pay us to think of the pros and the cons. So would it be all right if we evaluate some things and bring that back to you?
Even if we had, say, look, here's a vendor that, that we partner with and we provide them with graphics that go, then you could go to their website, like, say, uh, Collin the Flag, and they'll, they'll be one off, I believe. So, yeah, you want one, citizen, they go to Collin the Flag, they have everything you need, and then you purchase it. I, I, I don't, you know, whatever, we can be creative, but, but to simply say that you can't fly the flag in West Jordan, within the city of West Jordan, just confounds me a little, so, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Motion would be in order to adjourn city council meeting and, uh, move to the redevelopment agency meeting.
I, I would have one to mark first.
Okay, please.
The reason for my opposition to tabling, uh, former councilmember Stoker's, uh, community assignments is because we've missed out on a couple of Jordan River Commission meetings, and the next one is scheduled to be on June eighteen. So I was hoping that we could ha- have that filled prior to that.
Temporary basis or just temporary basis?
With motion. Just one, just that, Councilmember, aye. Just wanted to stand, Councilmember Rice, bill.
I, I move that we assign all committee assignments that were previously held by Councilmember Stoker to Councilmember Rice.
That haven't already been assigned, like...
That haven't already, yeah, stood, all those, yes.
We have a motion, by Councilmember McConaughey, and a second by Councilmember Nichols, discussion?
Yeah, so could you define those committees, I don't, I don't understand what your commotions are.
They were in the, in the... Do you have them there, have they been to you?
Well, that's a motion on appointing, uh, are we appointing to a official city committee?
Yes.
That hasn't been reassigned, so it shows as, uh, Arts Council, uh, Alternate to Historic Preservation, Harson Open Line Committee, Jordan River Restoration Project, Jordan River Council, and then I'm assuming the Brandings Sash Logo Committee is now defunct, and the CDG, that CDPG committee has been resolved, so those two would be irrelevant, so it would just be those others.
Let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Mayor Ral?
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Go pass this six in paper.
Motion?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, I move that we adjourn City Council, and convene the redevelopment agency meeting.
We have a motion by Councilmember Nichols, and a second by Councilmember McConaughey, discussion, motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I call to order the redevelopment agency meeting of June tenth, two thousand fifteen. The first item of business would be to approve the minutes of May thirteenth, two thousand fifteen.
Move to approval?
Second.
Sorry.
On a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, and a second by Councilmember Hanson, discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Council, Board Member Hanson?
Yes.
Chair Ral?
Yes.
Board Member Southworth?
Aye.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board Member Haga?
Yes.
Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
Go pass this six in paper.
Item B, discussion of possible action regarding Resolution one seventy, authorizing the preparation of a draft community development project area plan, and a benefit analysis and budget for community development project area, Copper Hills Marketplace, CDA two.
Yes, approval of this resolution would initiate the process to establish a CDA in the area of Nineties South, and, uh, Mountain View Corridor, or Fifty-Sixth Glass, excuse me.
We're all well versed on that. Any questions for David? Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, uh, and I move that, or, I shouldn't say member, board chair, how do you say it? How do you say that? Thank you, Chair, I move that we approve Resolution one seventy.
Second.
I have a motion by Board Member Nichols, and a second by Board Member Hanson, discussion? Let's vote.
Board Member Southworth?
Aye.
Chair Ral?
Yes.
Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
Board Member Hanson?
Yes.
Board Member Haga?
Yes.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
Go pass this six in paper.
Okay, item three A, public hearing item, receive public input and consider for approval, Resolution number one seven one, adopting the final budget for the city of West Jordan redevelopment agency for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen.
Are there any questions from the board on this? If not, we'll turn it over to you for the public hearing.
We'll now open the public hearing portion of item three A, anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and the motion would be in order. Board Member Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution number one seventy-one.
Have a motion by Board Member Nichols, and a second by Board Member Hanson, discussion? Let's vote.
Board Member Haga?
Yes.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board Member Southworth?
Aye.
Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
Chair Ral, Ral, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Chair Hanson, if you have one, Board Member Hanson?
Yes.
Go pass this six in paper.
Okay, uh, motion would be in order to adjourn the redevelopment agency meeting, um, and move to building authority.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion by Board Member Southworth, and a second by Board Member McConaughey, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? I call to order the municipal building authority meeting. First item of business, approve the minutes of May thirteenth, two thousand fifteen. Board Member Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes.
Second. A motion by Board Member Nichols, and a second by Board Member Hanson, discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Is that a resolution, does that have to be a little call to the voice?
It can be a voice call, it isn't a resolution. Have a look.
Hey, it's almost ten, this is voice.
This is, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? Item three A, public hearing, receive public input and consider for approval Resolution number eighty-five, adopting the final budget for the city of West Jordan municipal building authority for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, right?
Are there any questions from the board?
Questions?
Seeing none, Mayor, or Board Chair?
We will open the public hearing, anyone from the public wishing to address the board on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, move to a motion? Board Member Nichols, you're honorable.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I move to adopt Resolution eighty-five.
Second.
A motion by Board Member Nichols, and a second by Board Member McConaughey, discussion? Let's vote.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board Member Hanson?
Yes.
Board Member Haga? Chair Ral?
Yes.
Board Member Southworth?
Aye.
Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
Go pass this six in paper.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn, and a comment?
I move to adjourn the municipal building authority meeting, and re, and convene the Fairway Estate Special Service Recreation District meeting.
A motion by Councilmember McConaughey, and a second...
Second.
Board Member. McConaughey, and a second by Board Member Nichols, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We will open the Fairway Estate Special Service Recreation District meeting, I call it to order. The first order of the business would be a public hearing, receive public input, and consider for approval Resolution fifteen dash one zero three, adopting the final budget for the city of West Jordan Fairway Estate Special Service Recreation District for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen.
Are there any questions, board?
We will now open the public hearing on this item, anyone from the public wishing to speak on item two A. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. The motion would be in order. Board Member Nichols? I'll wait up to the Board Member McConaughey.
I move to approve Resolution fifteen dash one oh three, adopting the final budget.
Second.
We have a motion by Board Member McConaughey, and a second by Board Member Hanson, discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Board Member Hanson?
Yes, sorry.
Chair Ral?
Yes.
Board Member Southworth?
Aye.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board Member Haga?
Yes.
Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
Go pass this six in paper.
Item three A, approve the minutes of May fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, as presented. Board Member Nichols?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Have a motion by Board Member Nichols, and a second by Board Member McConaughey, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? Motion carries? Item three B, approve Resolution fifteen dash one zero four, setting the two thousand fifteen tax rate for the city of West Jordan Fairway Estate Special Service Recreation District.
Unless there are any questions at the board, we recommend approval of this resolution.
Motion would be in order? Chair, Board Member McConaughey?
Thank you, Chair, I move to adopt Resolution number fifteen dash one oh four, setting the two thousand fifteen property tax rate at a rate not to exceed the certified rate to be determined by solid count.
Second.
I have a motion by Board Member McConaughey, and a second by Board Member Nichols. Question? Let's vote.
Board Member Southworth? Chair Ral?
Yes.
Board Member Nichols?
Yes.
Board Member Hanson?
Yes.
Board Member Haga?
Yes.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
Go pass this six in paper.
Yes. Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We're adjourned. Okay, relax.